All right, I would like to announce that we have reconvened and make the following closed session disclosure. By a four zero vote with Councilmember Spees absent, the City Council authorized the City Attorney's Office to initiate litigation in one matter. The name of the defendants and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, this information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. With that, I will adjourn the special meeting at six twenty-five. And now switch over and call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, December the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and it is six twenty-six P M. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Consistent with state law, while a state of emergency remains active, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. The meeting location will be at eighty-four hundred Laguna Palms Way in the council chamber, but the chamber will not be open to the public. This meeting, the Elk Grove City Council, will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, December tenth, at one P M. And Thursday, December sixteenth, at nine A M. It is being closed captioned. It'll be webcast at SAC Metro Cable dot T V. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at Elk Grove City dot org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution number twenty-ten-two-four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker timer will be displayed, counting down the three-minute time. For callers connecting direct via telephone, they can utilize the raise hand feature by pressing star-nine on their phones. And the city clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound for those phone callers that come in to inform that one minute remains. When the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. When we are in the teleconference environment, whenever we do roll call or take a vote on an item, those are done out loud, audibly. And so for our roll call tonight, I will be commencing with our Councilmember Spees, who I do believe is absent this evening. And that will take me into Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Yeah.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
Again, for him to proceed, we've moved to the pledge of allegiance.
All right, very good. If we can display the flag. Hand over her. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, we will observe a moment of silence, please.
Madam Mayor, if I can, I would like to ask that we adjourn the meeting, and maybe people can think about the passing of Ed Kima, who, folks that come in and out of City Hall, might know his name. He is the person that built the carriage that's in the plexiglass container that sits in our lobby. The, I'm trying to think of the word of the stagecoach. That's the word I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is actually a special action item, item one A, which is the selection of the vice mayor and reorganization of the City Council. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, this comes before you as part of the norms and procedures manual. Every year, there is a selection of the vice mayor. The reorganization is a little bit different here in the teleconference environment, as we won't be moving any actual physical seats yet in the chamber that we would prepare for that. But what that reorganization will do is it will alter up if we have a change in the seat of vice mayor, the sequence in which we take the roll call votes, as I work backwards from the highest district number back and then to the vice mayor and mayor when we do take our roll call votes. So that would be a slight change that would occur. Otherwise, I have no other items for the staff report. In the staff report is just a listing of what the historical services vice mayor has been for the city of Elk Grove. And we can turn to open it up to any public comment.
All right, very good. We will open up the public comment opportunity.
So for attendees in the Zoom environment, this would be your opportunity to use that raise hand function. So that's a button that you'll find at the lower part in the Zoom environment. When you click on that, and after we're into an item, that lets us know that you wish to address this item. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I did not receive any written comments prior to the meeting in relation to item one A on our regular agenda. As I turn my attention over to our list of attendees, I am not seeing the raised hand function being utilized. So that will conclude public comment on item one A.
All right, very good. I would like to go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up to our council colleagues. I will jump out and go ahead and nominate. I would like to put up Councilmember Daronson for consideration as vice mayor.
That was going to be my suggestion as well, so I'll second it. Thank you, Mayor.
I agree.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
And that will move to the roll call vote. I will be starting with Councilmember Spees, who remains absent in the environment, and turn to Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
And with a four oh vote, our vice mayor proceeding forward will be Vice Mayor Suen.
All right, well, congratulations, Vice Mayor Suen, and thank you, Vice Mayor Wen, for your service this past year. Would you like to say anything before we move on?
No, congratulations to our new vice mayor Suen, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve as your vice mayor for the year and look forward to being a part of this council with our new vice mayor and our mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Daronson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank all of my colleagues for the support and nomination. Humbly and honored to accept, and I want to thank Vice Mayor Councilmember Wen for her service this past year as well. So, thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item, please.
That'll take us to section two, the approval of the agenda.
All right, may I get a motion, please?
So moved. Hume.
Second, Wen.
We have a motion in a second.
And prepare yourselves, as we'll have a little bit of a different order as I take this roll call vote. I will be starting off with Councilmember Wen.
I had to prepare myself as well, too. Usually, I'm not first.
Fair enough. Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Council, or Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Four oh, we have an agenda before us.
All right, next item, please.
There are no closed session items for the regular agenda under section three, so that will advance us to section four, our presentations and announcements. And that one presentation is item four point one, which is a recognition of Sky Schneider, Team USA, two thousand and twenty-one Pan American Games Outstanding Wrestler Award in the fifteen-and-under category.
Outstanding. Do we have Sky available?
I believe we do. I think we have a lot of folks that are sharing links, and I think I hear a few folks that are able to chime in, so I'll let them.
All right, well, until, we'll wait on Sky. I will go ahead and read.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, okay, showing up as Misty Well, perfect. I will go ahead and formally present you with the City of Elk Grove Certificate of Achievement. It is obviously presented to Sky Schneider, two thousand and twenty-one Outstanding Wrestler, Pan American Games, Mexico City. On behalf of Elk Grove City Council, we are pleased to congratulate Team USA Wrestler Sky Schneider, who earned the Outstanding Wrestler Award for the fifteen-year-old and under Women's Wrestling Division at the October twenty-two, October twenty-second through twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one Pan American Games in Mexico City, Mexico. We are very proud of the guidance and support displayed by the coaches, team participants, and parents. Sky's excellence in competition is testimony to her dedication and hard work, and we look forward to a bright future for this ascending star athlete. Congratulations, Sky.
Thank you.
Sky, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I was, I'm thankful for the recognition, and I put a lot of work to get here. And this is just one step closer to my goal, which is to win gold in the Olympics.
Well, outstanding. Those are great goals. Dream big, and we, as a city, will cheer you on in achieving those goals. Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go on to our next item, please.
I did just want to put out the opportunity of Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, if you'd so wait. I think they did have a few other participants.
My apologies, please.
Coaches wanted to jump in.
Yes, yes, yes.
Ways as if they use that raise hand function, but I think I see Mr. Josh Jordan might be.
Oh, good, okay. I'm not seeing the raised hands, and now I am. Thank you. Hi, Josh.
Let me see what I can do on my side here. And Mr. Jordan, what you may want to do is be unmuting on your side. It might be the effect that we have you on this side ready to go, but you might just have to unmute yourself. Whoops. And I think we might have.
Did we lose?
Yeah, I'm not seeing him. I think he might have logged off. I think everyone might have, it sounded like they were in training.
Yeah, there was definitely some good background noise. Are there any other coaches or other participants who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Okay. I see Sky Schneider again, I think.
Might be one of the family members utilizing the same account.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is Coach Jordan. We actually logged in from practice, so sorry for the background noise there, but we'll keep it short and sweet. Just wanted to say thank you for the city. This young girl has put a lot of time and effort into the sport of wrestling. Her ultimate goal is really to grow awareness around women's wrestling, and I think she's, I think she's on that right path. So just wanted to say thanks again for the recognition, and it means a lot to not only her, but her family and all the support system that goes along with her. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Any council colleagues want to make any comments? Just unmute yourself.
Just congratulations and looking forward to watching you go further as what your goals are.
Thank you, Councilmember Wen. Vice Mayor Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo those sentiments as a as a, have a parent who had a child wrestle as well. It's a demanding sport, and it's nice to see her success so far. We have high hopes for her. Look forward to seeing good things.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, sorry, I couldn't get my buttons pushed fast enough there. I just want to add on to what my colleague said and just say, Sky, you know, congratulations on setting such an amazing goal to represent us at the Olympics and go on to win a gold. Frankly, you know, I think that the fact that you've put that brass ring out in front of you really speaks a lot to what a determined young person you are. And so, good on you. This is, this is a notch on your bedpost so far, but, but keep that bigger dream alive. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and good luck on your practice this evening. All right, congratulations again. We will now move on to our next item. I don't see any other hands raised.
And that will move us on to section five for public comment. So any of our attendees in the Zoom audience now would be that opportunity. And thanks for our participants out there for using the raised hand function. Members of the participating audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the City Council or city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, there was one written comment that was received prior to the meeting that was distributed to the full council and staff. And then we have folks queuing up with the raised hand feature, and I will pull up that speaker timer now.
Sharon Anderson, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, Madam Mayor, new Vice Mayor Suen and the rest of the City Council. Good evening. I wanted to bring to your attention a possibility that the City of Elk Grove, in concert with the Community Services District, might want to consider a beautification committee or something of that line. We have a lot of nice, wonderful committees, but I don't think we have something that's akin to what the City of Livermore, City of Galt, and many other cities have, and that is a beautification committee, which is a nexus to assure that, you know, perhaps our beautiful public spaces remain beautiful. I know we can do S P A's, you know, special planning areas and like Old Town and that sort of a thing. But also a nexus for our code enforcement or, you know, neighborhood development and neighborhood preservation. We really don't have that within the city of Elk Grove. So just something food for thought. You know, we have the Arts Commission, we have Trails Committee, we have all these wonderful bodies, but, and Planning Commission, but nobody really takes the lead on something with respect to overall beautification and making sure that our, you know, that our code enforcement people also have consistent input and support from a general committee. And it's not just code enforcement. It's so much more when you're thinking of beautification. So just put a B in the, you know, an idea in your head, and if you wanted more thoughts, I'd be happy to meet with anybody. And I know there's a few of us out there that think that, I think it's time for the city to move into having a joint beautification committee or council between the C S D and the, and the city of Elk Grove. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I'll reach out to you next week. Next caller, please.
Lynn Wheat, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Last weekend, I attended the Elk Grove Historical Society's fifteenth annual Old Fashioned Christmas, and it was just spectacular. And I just wanted to draw your attention to it because it will be going on for the next couple of weekends, and it's just offering families and children opportunity as well as seeing the wonderful light, lights that they have decorated surrounding the homes and the different buildings there. It is absolutely beautiful. I know that this was a work of love by all of those that are involved and really presents that message of love should you attend it. I think in these dark times, this is an opportunity to bring a little bit of light into your life during the season. So I hope that you will continue to support the Elk Grove Historical Society because as our logo is, what is it? Proud Heritage, what, you know, I can't remember. Anyways, just wanted to bring that to your attention and help you all make it out. It's available for the next couple of weekends, on Saturdays from eleven to six and on Sundays from eleven to five. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Proud Heritage, Bright Future. I look forward to attending. Thank you for bringing that up. Next caller, please.
And I'm looking over the attendee list. I do not see the raised hand function being utilized by any of our participating members. That would conclude public comment under channel public comment.
All right, we will then move on to our next item, please.
That will take us to section six, general administration information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, our new vice mayor and members of the City Council, Jason Bearman, who's city manager. Few items to report in this evening. First, I want to give an update on the efforts over the last month or so regarding the feasibility study for a potential new zoo in Elk Grove. Staff continues to work with the Sacramento Zoological Society and consultants on the feasibility of building a new, modern zoological park in Elk Grove that would expand and enhance animal habitats, education, and conservation. Staff, the mayor and council members recently conducted study missions to both Fresno and Houston zoos in order to better understand zoo operations, costs, and opportunities as part of the city's due diligence efforts. The city and Zoological Society are operating under an exclusive negotiating agreement that runs through March two thousand and twenty-two, which could be extended if more time is needed to complete the feasibility analysis. Feasibility study will analyze potential animal habitats, construction and operating costs, and revenue sources from zoo operations, private fundraising, and city contributions. Feasibility study is expected to be completed in early next year, presented to the council for consideration with input from the public upon completion. At that time, council could direct staff to proceed with negotiating agreement with the Zoological Society. Also happy to report on update regarding the Elk Grove Rail Station. Now, last week, the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission released the draft environmental impact report for the Elk Grove Rail Station. The proposed project will construct a passenger rail station and siding track to support the new passenger rail service between Stockton and Sacramento. The proposed station platform will be just north of Laguna Boulevard and along the existing U P R Sacramento subdivision, which is the U P R rail line that extends from Marysville in the north and Stockton in the south. Overall station improvements include the construction of a new platform, new surface parking lot, a pedestrian overcrossing linking the station to the surface parking lot, and new rail track. The document is available for review at City Hall, local libraries, and on the commission's website, W W W dot S J R R C dot com. Residents who were not selected to participate in the National Community Survey conducted earlier this year still have a chance to weigh in on city services. The link to the online survey is now available on the city's website. Survey is completely confidential, though we do ask for a zip code and email address so we can contact residents with future opportunities to provide feedback. Survey is open through December seventeenth. The Illumination Festival and Parade of Lights are over, but the holiday season is still shining bright. Elk Grove's interactive holiday light tour map makes it easy to locate dazzling exhibits. Download details and self-guided light tour map on the city's website. Elk Grove Police Department will be increasing the number of officers on patrol and local shopping centers throughout the holiday season. The increased police presence will allow officers to focus on suspicious activity occurring in and around shopping centers, which historically have experienced a seasonal increase in criminal activity. Officers will conduct these patrols in marked patrol vehicles, unmarked vehicles, and on foot. Tonight and tomorrow night, the Kasumnas Fire and Elk Grove Police Department will host a Santa and Sirens drive-through event from seven to nine P M at the C S D Fire Headquarters at ten-five-seven-three East Stockton Boulevard. This free event will offer a free holiday experience for residents. It connects them with local police and fire personnel for holiday cheer and goodwill. First responders will be collecting new unwrapped toys for the community toy drive at this event. The Elk Grove Local E-Gift Card, if you're still considering gift options, consider buying an Elk Grove Local E-Gift Card. The card can be purchased online and used at a number of Elk Grove retailers, restaurant services, and entertainment venues. Right now, the city is offering a bonus gift. If you purchase a gift card at either fifty or hundred dollar increments, you will receive a free twenty-dollar bonus gift card. Limit one per purchaser. All supplies last. The link to purchase is available on the city's website. The Police Department Citizens Academy will begin on February twenty-second. Ten weeks. It's a ten-week program designed to inform and educate residents on various aspects of municipal policing. Covers procedures for patrol investigations, vehicle operations, arrests, and control techniques, nine-one-one communications, code enforcement, and animal control. The Citizens Academy is free of charge and meets on Tuesday evenings from six to nine P M. For more information or to apply, visit the Police Department's website. Finally, in accordance with city holidays, City Hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday, December twenty-third, twenty-fourth for the Christmas holiday, and Thursday and Friday, December thirtieth and thirty-first for the New Year's holiday. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right, thank you, sir. Excellent report and update. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, we will move on to our next item. Thank you again.
And next item will be section seven, the consent calendar items. And for our members in the participating teleconference environment, if you have comments on any of the items of the consent calendar, now is that opportunity to use the raised hand function. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, there was one written comment that was received in relation to a consent calendar item that was received prior to the meeting, which was distributed with the full City Council and staff. As I look over our list of attendees in the Zoom environment, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized for the consent calendar items. So that will conclude public comment on section seven.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion, but I would like to make a comment on item seven point eight, which is the resolution remaining teleconference meetings for the next thirty days. I know that the governor's emergency order goes through March of next year, but I'm probably getting to the point where I'm not going to be willing to vote for these thirty-day renewals much longer. I've been trying to get us back in person for quite a while now, and one of these days I will convince Darren that having these meetings in his pajamas is not worth staying away from City Hall. So I'm hopeful anyway.
I couldn't agree with you more. I obviously have been a champion for going back in person for quite a while, but safety, of course, is important. And I think as soon as we're able to, I would like to see us move forward as well in that direction and hopeful that the mask mandate may be lifted, perhaps even in the, in the beginning of the year. So let's remain optimistic and hopeful, but I think that there is a desire to come back in person as soon as possible. But thank you for bringing that up. So I heard a motion. I don't, did I see a second? Is that you?
Second.
Second, Suen, second.
Okay.
With the motion, second for the approval of the consent calendar items, I'll be starting the roll call vote with Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Consent calendar items pass four oh.
All right, next item, please.
Take us to section eight, our public hearings, starting with item eight point one. It's the public hearing to consider determination of public convenience or necessity for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption. A B C type twenty-one license for the Elk Grove Florin Road Chevron Project located at eight-four-eight-seven Elk Grove Florin Road.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the Elk Grove City Council. Antonio Ablog here to present item eight point one, the Elk Grove Florin Road Chevron Determination of Public Convenience or Necessity. This, this project is request for determination of public convenience or necessity for a type twenty-one alcohol license from the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. A type twenty-one license allows for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption. You can see the project location on the screen before you. It's at eighty-four-eight-seven Elk Grove Florin Road. This is an existing Chevron station. This is a newly constructed station. It began operation in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. They are operating under an existing alcoholic beverage control type twenty license, which does allow them to sell beer and wine for off-site consumption. They provided a floor plan to show where in the existing store they plan to store the liquor. They, they will add a area behind the counter where the distilled spirits will be sold. Also, they will provide a shelving area on the sales floor for the distilled spirits. Regarding the determination of public convenience or necessity, the California State Alcoholic Beverage Control requires an applicant to obtain a P C N, public convenance or necessity determination, when the establishment is located within a area that's determined to be high crime or when a census tract is deemed to be over-concentrated by the A B C standards. Grove is separated into twenty-six subsectors. This project site is located in subsector thirty-one oh two. These are subsectors for the Police Department to determine crime activity. Looking at the crimes reported for two thousand and twenty, subsector thirty-one zero two, for which this project is located, had a hundred thirty-five crimes. And I just want to point out, I had one hundred thirty-five crimes. And I just want to point out, I believe, staff report had an incorrect number at one fifty-one. The correct number is one thirty-five. And that was the number that the Police Department reviewed in making their determination for this project. As far as the average number of crimes reported per beat, that was one hundred and four in two thousand twenty. Object is supposed to be located in Census Tract Ninety-three One Four. Alcoholic beverage control has determined that based on the population of the Census Tract, no more than three off-sale licenses within this Census Tract may be issued. Any more than that, it would be considered over-concentrated. As far as the city code, what we are looking at when we're reviewing these requests for public convenience and necessity, we look at the proximity and number of other retail outlets selling alcohol, the proximity of those retail outlets to schools, playgrounds, and other facilities serving young people, the proximity of retail outlets to residential neighborhoods, and whether the retail outlet provides a wide range of desirable goods and services or a unique type of goods and services for the community. Based on those criteria, city staff provided a map outlet kind of locating some of those uses based on the criteria. The nearest public school, which is Arthur C. Butler Elementary, is over a half mile from the site to the east. As far as parks, Gage Park is the nearest park at three hundred feet, but it's on the west side of Elk Grove Florin Road, so that will kind of provide a barrier being Elk Grove Florin Road being a major thoroughfare. And Emmonson Park is to the south, but that's over seven hundred feet from the store. There is the early beginnings preschool, which is south of the site. However, since it's a preschool, students at that school aren't are arriving to and from that school with their parents, so they wouldn't have free access to the store. Also, from this map, staff has noted the retail outlets within the Census Tract that do sell alcohol. To the north is the Bell Air Market. They have a license to sell alcoholic beverages. And then to the south, approximately one mile is the Bond Market. They also have the other alcoholic beverage license within the Census Tract. This request was reviewed by the Police Department based and based on the proximity to the uses shown on the map and in review of the number of crimes reported in district. The Police Department did not find that issuing a letter of public inconvenience would pose any issues at this location. Again, they do have an existing license, a Type Twenty license for beer and wine, and have been operating approximately two years without issues at that location. Furthermore, the applicant has committed to continue ongoing staff training related to age-restricted sales and point-of-sale terminals with features to assist employees in flagging underage sale attempts to purchase age-restricted products. They have mirrors and security cameras with twenty-four-hour video, and they do have signage alerting the customers of those security features. Staff has deemed this project to be exempt from the State California Environmental Quality Act guidelines as those guidelines only apply to projects that have the potential for causing significant effect on the environment. Granting a public convenience and necessity at this location will expand services within an existing retail center and not bring about any physical change to the environment. With that, staff does recommend the City Council adopt a resolution finding the Elk Grove Chevron Project, sorry for all project reference there, exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section fifteen oh six one B three and approving a determination of public convenience or necessity for a Type Twenty-One alcohol license for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is also on the line this evening. Should there be any questions?
Or hold on. My zoo is doing funny things. Then you see me. Okay, there we go. I lost you there for a second. All right. Well, thank you for that presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open. I would like to invite the applicant. Councilmember Hume, did you have a question now, or you want to wait till after the applicant?
I do. I just have a quick question that I can mull over while we're hearing public comment. Antonio, have we issued a Type Twenty-One license for a gas station elsewhere in the city? And if it puts you on the spot, go ahead and you can think about it or use some resources and look it up, but I just wanted to put that out there that I would like to know the answer to that if you can.
Off, let's see. Off the top of my head, I do know there are Type Twenty-One licenses. I know the Gilmore M P M at Sheldon Road does have a Type Twenty-One license, and I believe the Chevron at Promenade off of Ninety-Nine, the new one, that also has a Type Twenty-One license. So it's not atypical of a service station to have a Type Twenty-One license.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume. I would like to invite the applicant to speak if they're interested.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, please proceed. You're going through loud and clear.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Okay, I have no any question. If you guys have any question, I'm willing to answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Singh. With that, I'm going to open up the public comment opportunity for others. If there are members of the public who have any questions or comments.
So for attendees in the Zoom environment, now would be the opportunity to use the raised hand function for item eight point one. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, there were no written comments that were received in relation to item eight point one prior to the meeting. As I go back over our list of attendees in the Zoom environment, I am not seeing the raised hand function being utilized for any comments. That would conclude public comment opportunity on item eight point one.
Okay, Mr. Singh, would you like to say anything, or are you ready for us to close the public hearing and move on to deliberations?
You can go ahead. I have no any comments, but it's okay to proceed.
Okay, very good. I will declare the public hearing then is not closed and open it up to council colleagues for any questions. We will start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'll just start. I hearken back to my colleague on the planning commission, Paul Lindsey, who always had an objection to any alcohol sales at gas stations, just because the two uses don't get along well with one another. And whereas I've always maintained that, you know, beer and wine, certainly the argument can be made that that is a convenience to pick something up as you're as you're performing another errand or on your way somewhere. You know, alcohol to me is, you know, distilled spirits specifically is not something that I would consider to be an impulse buy. But that's why I asked the question that I did. If we've set the precedent that we have issued these licenses previously, then I can't stand in the way, but it just, it doesn't really feel right. Doesn't feel right. I'll leave it at that, but I won't stand in the way.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume. Councilwoman Nguyen.
Take some water. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gonna take a while to switch, but I have no questions.
Vice Mayor Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Councilmember Hume raising the issue and asking the question. And given that we have set precedent in this and that this user has not had any incidents since he's been in business, and our Police Department seems to think that there's there's no safety issues there. And again, the owner is willing to do other things to be diligent about ensuring underage people aren't allowed to or aren't able to purchase these spirits. I'm one to support this application tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments, Vice Mayor. I agree with what you have raised. Most importantly, from our Police Department, they don't see any public safety reasons to be in opposition. And most importantly, they do not believe that there will be an increase in calls for police services. I think those are definitely very important. And the staff report, I think, was very clear. I also very much appreciate, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, the extra things that the applicant is willing to do. Definitely want to pay very, very close attention to proper training for underage sales. It comes in many ways. And so just to find the most effective ways and diverse ways of getting that training for all staff. And then the security measures for twenty-four-hour cameras and surveillance is also great. So I have no issues with this. I did not hear a motion, so I will look for a motion.
I think the Vice Mayor motions. I'll second.
I'll move to adopt the resolution. Yeah.
Very good. We have a motion and a second.
With the motion and the second, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sun.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of item eight point one passes four oh.
All right. Thank you, and good luck to you, Mr. Singh. I see your hand raised. Mr. Singh, did you have a question?
No, I just want to say thank you to the city and especially Mayor and also the new deputy mayor, and I hope I'll be see you guys soon.
Very good. Thank you, and good luck to you. Happy holidays. All right, next item.
That will take us on to item eight point two, a public hearing to consider a resolution of intent to amend the general plan to incorporate updates to the two thousand twenty-one housing elements, see go exempt.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers Christopher Jordan. I'm joined this evening on this item by Sarah Bontrager, our Housing and Public Services Program Manager. Sarah and I are going to go through this brief presentation to discuss proposed amendments to the recently adopted housing element. As you recall, back in May, you adopted the new housing element for the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine planning period. Since then, staff has submitted the element for formal review and action by HCD. That certification is required. They provided comments in September at the tail end of their review window and identified some concerns that they asked to have revised revisions to the element. Your Planning Commission reviewed this at their meeting on November eighteenth and recommended approval to the council. Real quickly, a reminder of the housing element. This is one of the required elements or chapters of the general plan. It is subject to state approval, one of the few sections of the general plan that is. It is required to be updated on an eight-year cycle. So we recently completed the two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-one housing period and have started now the twenty-one to twenty-nine period. There was a May fifteenth twenty-one adoption deadline, which the city did make, and we've now gone through the next steps in that process. The state has established a variety of goals for the housing elements, including that we adequately plan to meet the housing needs of everyone in the community. We designate policies to encourage housing production, and that we zone land at a variety of densities to support different housing types and development. The element overall covers an analysis of the existing projected housing needs of the community. It identifies an inventory of available land for housing to meet the city's share of the regional housing needs allocation. It presents an analysis of potential constraints on housing for things such as permit fees, processing, timeframes, permit requirements, and so forth. It provides an evaluation of the previous housing elements and the action items that were included in that document to determine what should move forward, what should be modified, revised, or eliminated. And then finally, it includes goals, policies, and those action programs or implementation programs for the new planning period. I'll talk briefly about HCD's review process. Back in the spring, as the element was being finalized for public and ultimately started a public review and was brought forward to the hearing process, we submitted the draft to HCD for their review and comments. We received those on or about March twenty-second. Majority of their comments and requests were for clarification, some wordsmithing. We were able to include those and work out those revisions with them. Ultimately, that revised draft was presented to the commission, ultimately to the council for review, and you did adopt that. Following the adoption, staff formally submitted it to HCD for certification. That's about a sixty-day or so process for them to go through and do that final check to make sure all the i's are crossed and t's are dotted, if you will. They did provide, again, the response at the end of that sixty-day process that there were some additional requested revisions that they had. Sarah will talk about these in a little more detail, but essentially, these were to the implementation measures and some discussion regarding affirmatively furthering fair housing. We spent time since September with HCD to work on those revisions and identify what specific changes they would like to see. And I'm pleased to report that as of last week, they have given the thumbs up to the draft we're presenting to you this evening, that if you were to adopt this, they are prepared to certify the element. So with those changes, again, we'd have the certified element. The revisions we're presenting this evening, none of these are to changes in the housing goals or policies, nor do any of the changes impact the sites that we've identified for meeting our share of the regional housing needs allocation. Again, these revisions focused exclusively on the analysis of the assessment of fair housing, which is a state mandated requirement. It also includes new exhibits that illustrate poverty, excuse me, poverty status, ethnicity, familial status, and environmental health conditions. And then again, it prevent, excuse me, it presents revisions to the implementation actions. For those implementing actions, there is, and I just want to briefly touch on this, there's no current penalty if we fail to achieve these. What the state's asked for, not just clarifications and the actions themselves, and what sort of actions we would go through and how we would implement these programs, but they've also required quantified objectives. This is something that's outlined in state law. So essentially, maybe a certain program we describe that we're going to reach out to residents of a certain income category or income classification. Okay, well, how many people are we targeting with this? How many people do we try and to provide this program to? What do we measure success by? Essentially, how much do we see that success? Where do we quantify that success? These actions require a good faith on the part of the city. There is no, again, no penalty. There's no requirement in state law. There's no role we could put on if we fail to act on something or we don't hit the objectives themselves. But we do eventually go through and do an annual review to make sure what we are doing is consistent with what's in the measure or how are we performing? Are we hitting our targets? We do that through the general plan and report as well as a concluding analysis that occurs in the housing element at the start of the next planning period. I will note that some of the programs we're presenting this evening may require some additional staffing and other financial resources. Staff is analyzing this, given other current workloads, and will identify any augmentation request in future budgets as they come forward to you. I will also say the state has been pretty good the last couple of years, providing grant funding, some of it on a block grant basis, some of them on a competitive basis, particularly through SECOG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments in order to support these programs and implementation actions. We expect that the state will continue to do that. They've given indications. They'll be proposing that in future fiscal year budgets. So we'll be looking at those as opportunities to help offset these costs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, who will go through the revisions themselves. Sarah.
Okay, thank you. So as Christopher mentioned, many of the HCD requests were related to matters that they considered kind of fair housing matters. And this was primarily in two areas. One of them is in trying to ensure that the city provides housing and affordable housing in high opportunities and areas of over-concentrated payment. And so as you'll see when I go through the changes to the policies or the changes to the actions, rather, many of them are focused on quantifying objectives related to what will be done in high-opportunity areas. High-opportunities areas are really those areas where they have outcomes, positive outcomes for low-income families. outcomes, positive outcomes for low-income families, particularly for children. And so those are generally areas where people, where there are a lot of job opportunities, where there are good quality schools, where there are a lot of parks and open spaces, and many of the things that our community is really proud of having. And as a result, most of Elk Grove is in a higher highest opportunity area. On this map, you can see the darkest blue and the lighter blue are high-opportunity areas. So we have most of Elk Grove in those areas. We do have a few moderate resource areas. We have no low-resource areas in Elk Grove. So staff feels pretty confident that development in high-opportunity areas is possible over the next eight years. And then the other, the other thing that HCD looked at is our areas of concentrated overpayment. And on this measure, Elk Grove does not do quite as well. These are areas where either homeowners or renters are paying more than 30% of their income towards housing. On this map that I have here from the housing element, you can see those areas where renters are paying more than 30% of their income. And the darker the coloring, the higher the percentage, with the darkest red, meaning more than 70% of renters are paying more than 30% of their income for housing. So as rents have gone up and incomes have not gone up quite as quickly in many cases, we do have, we do have quite a few of these areas. The situation for homeownership is better. That map is also in our housing element. I didn't cut it for this presentation. But the the situation is more dire for renters. And so some of the programs and some of the changes that we made to the housing element are really focused on targeting those areas where renters are paying too much and letting them know about new affordable housing opportunities. So in the next few slides, we cover a little bit of information about the changes that we made to different actions. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to go into all of these in great depth, but I will just highlight a few of them for you. So on this slide, action number five relates to our lot consolidation program. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure would happen is that where there are small lots and the lots are not big enough to do a project, generally developers are looking for at least 60 units, so typically a couple of acres or more. We have a lot consolidation program for that. And so what we're projecting here is that we would build a total of 149 lower-income units on those in high-opportunity areas where lots are consolidated. And we have quite a few of those lot consolidation opportunities in the city. Action number six is our missing middle housing type. And so looking at how do we address the the middle income and moderate income households in our community, many of whom have been priced out of homeownership opportunities in particular. And so we added in this area a quantified objective that would that would target over the next eight years 40 new middle or moderate income units, and those could be rental or ownership units. And the cities, some of the sites that the city owns are great opportunities to try and create those ownership opportunities. On action number eight, this is kind of where we've we've put a lot of our investment over over the years. This is our financial assistance to new affordable housing developments. And so what we did with this action was we increased the number of units that we projected funding over the next eight years to 300 units. And we'll target some of those units in areas of concentrated overpayment and in high-opportunity areas. And at this point, we have two projects that we have, we have made loan commitments to, and you'll be considering a third project tonight. And that that would cover, if all of those projects move forward, that would cover this action item entirely. Then skipping forward to action number 15, this is really about targeted marketing on affordable housing. So we we have we have really tried in recent years and hope to continue this to really get the word out about our affordable housing opportunities when we have a new project open. And I think that the success that we had with the Gardens at Quail Run and the 28,000 unique lottery entries we got for that project really shows that our public affairs team can do an excellent job with that. And so we want to continue that and and just continue spreading the word about new opportunities over the next, over the next eight years. And so we're hoping that through those efforts, we will assist 400 lower-income households to find new affordable housing opportunities so that they can stay in our community. We have a lengthy, lengthy action number 19, which is our affirmatively furthering fair housing action. Most of the changes in this in this section were really tying of fair housing to some of the other actions that we had in the in the housing element. But we did add a few quantified objectives in there, looking at infill housing, looking at accessible housing, housing that's accessible to people with disabilities in particular, and making sure that that residents have access to open space as well, which which is which is a component that the city looks at in funding new projects and approving new projects. And then finally, actions number 22 and number 23 are related to our housing choice voucher program, which is administered at the county level by the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And so we made some changes there, trying to increase the number of households that are participating in that program, and landlords in particular, that are participating in that program. And and really do more education to people who might be eligible for the program, to landlords who could be eligible for the program, to try and increase acceptance of those vouchers in our community, because that is often the best option for some of our low-income households to obtain long-term affordable housing. But I think that that sums up kind of the highlights that I wanted to do on the actions. And so what we're asking the council to do tonight is to adopt a resolution finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to the Sequel Regulation cited there and a resolution of intent to amend the general plan by amending the 2021-29 housing element as set forth in the staff report that that you have in front of you. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that very thorough presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
This would be that opportunity for folks in our Zoom environment to use the raise hand feature for item 8.2 and comments that you may have on this item. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there were no written comments received in relation to item 8.2 prior to the meeting. As I take my attention over to our list of attendees in the Zoom environment, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. That will conclude public comment opportunity for item 8.2.
All right. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Open it up for any council comments or questions. We will start with Councilmember Hume.
Hey, Mayor, just a couple of questions. I don't have an issue, obviously, with the the overall scope of of this item. And and I appreciate the Planning Commission's work in reviewing it. I know what a thorough job that is every time it comes forward. But I have a couple of questions. One broad, and then one relative to the staff report. So the broad question is, in the determination of high-opportunity areas, in looking at that map that you showed in those dark blue areas, a lot of those were outside of the city in primarily agricultural-zoned land. And then some of it was within the city, but within what we've designated as our rural area, which will, we have policies in our general plan to prevent densification of that area. And so I'm just curious as to how how that high-opportunity designation ends up on on land that is not likely or feasible to be developed in the near term.
Yeah, so all of the state gets a designation. So every census tract in the state gets put into one of these categories. So it doesn't matter if those are urban or rural areas. I probably could have done a better job in this in this map of highlighting the actual Elk Grove boundaries. But we pulled this directly from the opportunity mapping. And so I I don't, at the current time, there's not much distinction between high and highest opportunity areas. Both of them receive a funding bump for certain state funding sources, including tax credits. And that's allowed some of our projects to move forward, like the second phase of Gardens at Quail Run, which is being developed and is under construction without any funding from the city. And we're seeing other developers looking at that as well in those high and highest opportunity areas. For some of the areas that that kind of lead into the rural areas, most of the population that those areas are based on is based on parts that are parts that are kind of urban. They're still, they have not redrawn the maps to reflect the most recent census data. So for example, some of the 95757 area that's developed mostly in the last 10 years is still kind of blended into the rural area there. And, you know, going forward, I think that we'll see that 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 will be fleshed out and those will become their own areas and we'll see more of a boundary at the city limits there. But for now, they it's all one, it's all considered one census tract. I do expect that those will continue to be high-opportunity areas or highest opportunity areas.
Appreciate the detailed response. You had me at all of California received some sort of designation. Thank you. And then my second question is on the next map, if you could advance the slide. With respect to this map, who determined the 30% threshold? Because, you know, in my mind, I seem to remember, you know, rule of thumb, if you will, relative to a mortgage payment, is that if if it's not about, if you can't afford about a third of your income, then you can't afford that mortgage. And so I'm just wondering how we got to to a different, what I think is a different nexus or different metric here.
Yeah. And again, this is, this is, this is kind of a national standard that's been adopted by the state. At the federal level, we often, like our community development block grant plans, look at this same statistic. We look at it at 30%, and we also look at it at 50%, so people who are paying more than half of their income for housing. The 30% is around what what we'd expect people to be paying for housing. That's kind of a safe assumption. It is true that many, many landlords want people to earn two to three times the monthly rent, so they will rent to people you know, who who their standard is a little bit more generous. Lenders, the same thing. You can get a homeownership loan, a mortgage loan with probably up to 45% of this. But this is kind of considered the the federal standard for what is, what is reasonable for households to pay towards housing costs. I think what it what it shows more more than, you know, argue, like, more than thinking through the actual percentage, I think it shows where there are areas in the region where housing costs are higher. And and I think that that's that's really ultimately what's reflected here is that we have some areas where the costs of renting and homeownership tend to be higher. And we we want to make sure that the folks who live in our community are able to have housing options throughout the community.
Okay. And yeah, and I'm not arguing against the fact we have an attainability crisis statewide. Just it was more had to do with what I've always used as the the metric for what I would consider a reasonable amount of your income. And then my last question is more in the weeds to the staff report regarding action number five. It speaks to the quantified objective of 149 lower-income units in high-opportunity areas to facilitate mobility. Can you explain a little more what that change is doing?
Yeah, so so that change is is focused on how many units will be developed in higher-opportunity areas. And it's it's assumed the facility mobility part is really about, hopefully, providing an opportunity in those high-opportunity areas for people to move from other areas where opportunity is not so high. So that could be within Elk Grove or outside of Elk Grove, but moving to places where schools are better, where there's more job opportunities, where there's more outdoor spaces and a higher environmental quality. And so that's really what the mobility factor is in that.
So it was a semantic confusion for me, because in the transportation world, obviously, mobility has very different connotation. Thank you.
Let's see, Councilwoman, when?
Sorry, I was trying to navigate my staff report and then also the Zoom and unmute as well, too. I thank you, Sarah, for for this presentation and lots and lots of maps. I was trying to look through all the maps and it was great, because some of them even mentioned property levels of communities. And I did look at the one map that Councilmember Hume talked about, and that it was the highest resource area. While it does go into the rural areas, I noticed that a lot of it is in District 4. And while I understand that we want to make sure that we have housing in areas that are of high resources. You know, I talk about this all the time, and that is to push that we need to ensure that these are all across our cities and not so concentrated in just in just one area, right? And so I appreciate all the action items. I especially like the areas where it would talk about language and making sure that the information is is in various languages for our community. Because, as you know, we're a very diverse city, and so we want to make sure it reaches all our communities. And that's it. I really appreciate all the maps that were included in in this staff report here. Really detailed a lot of information for us.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll concur with Councilman Wynn's comment. We need to make sure we're going to disperse it evenly throughout the city. I don't know what that means in the rural area when you don't, you're not allowing urbanization out there. But maybe that's a conversation we need to have, because we're cutting off, you know, nearly, in terms of acreage, a good portion of our city for those opportunities. Obviously, you know, we we have a statutory requirement here. I'm going to support to to adopt this resolution of intent. And but I just want to just comment, I mean, I, first of all, I want to thank Sarah and Christopher Jordan, Sarah Bontrager and Christopher Jordan, for your hard work in in getting us to this point and working with HCD. These metrics that you're you're required to put in and hopefully that they will support, that they say they will. I mean, some of these are putting the city on on as a metric. And I know that, you know, Christopher, you mentioned that they we don't have to meet them, but we need to make an effort. But I just want to point out, I mean, to this audience knows, but in general, for the public, I mean, we, the city, does not build housing. So we can put these things in place. We can allocate, set aside land. And we're going to do everything we can. I mean, Sarah has already done that with a lot of incentives. We have an affordable housing fee program that we charge market rate developers. So we're doing everything we can as a jurisdiction, but, you know, it's housing developers, affordable housing developers with a capital A, which is, you know, a lot of times different from the market rate developers. So different businesses there. But they need to do the the work. We're going to do what we can as a city to encourage that, incentivize that. Affordable housing builders needs funding from the state, and I know the state passed a lot of money on for that purpose, so commend them for that. Our market rate builders need to do, you know, work with banks, and those banks need to lend money. So this this issue is just greater than what we are seeing right here. I just want to make that clear for for everybody. And I I think, you know, we, the city, are doing our part to try to incentivize and and get, you know, more housing built from a market perspective and the affordable side to to address these issues. So and all of that, of course, you know, has an effect on our homeless population as well. So that's all. I just want to add those comments in. So, um, that's all. I just want to add those comments in. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sun. Um, I echo a lot of the comments that we've already heard. Um, you know, what was alarming to me is on that map where you have your, the revisions map, the last two bullets, if you want to pull that up. Let's see, not, uh, not, maybe it's not this one, that one, yeah. Um, those two, the last two bullets really just stick out for me a lot. The increases risk of displacement due to not being able to afford housing. And then of course, um, where renters are paying too much for housing. I see and hear about this very regularly. This is a great concern and to the Vice Mayor's point, when it comes to a shortage of just housing in general, but also most importantly, affordable housing, and that means more than just being able to rent. Ideally, homeownership, that should always still be a goal. And, you know, while we don't, um, control what's being built, we do all have relationships with a lot of these folks. And this is where, you know, we also as leaders can also make some of those asks so that we can have, um, you know, being able to meet some of those needs. And of course I recognize that this is a statewide issue, it's a big regional issue. But we certainly have to work, um, collaboratively to address a lot of those needs. Um, so, but thank you both, um, Christopher Jordan and Sarah Bontrager for your excellent report. Um, this is, you know, it's just, it's good, obviously, um, to see where are these revisions and these, you know, these, um, facts that you've shared and have it really overlay with those maps and see where all of that takes place because to Councilwoman, um, Nguyen's point, you don't just want these in pockets, um, affordable housing. We want to be able to share that throughout the city so that you're not creating, um, issues of equity. Um, and, you know, creating, creating sort of disenfranchisement communities within pockets throughout our city. So this is incumbent upon all of us to collectively advocate, um, for our community. So thank you. Um, I don't, I don't have any questions. I do want to recognize the tremendous work that the planning commission did before us and, uh, and helping and bringing this forward. Thank you. Uh, with that, I will look for a motion.
I'm making move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
The roll call vote. We'll start with Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sun.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of intent on item eight point two will pass 4-0.
All right, great. We will move on to our next item then. Looks like Mr. Jordan is back up.
And indeed, for item eight point three, that will be a public hearing to consider a resolution of intent to amend the general plan safety element consistency with Assembly Bill seven, four, seven, and one, four, zero, nine for evacuation route planning, sequo exempt.
Hey Jason, and thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so this item, as Jason mentioned, is a general plan amendment. Uh, this would, uh, implement Assembly Bill seven, forty-seven and Assembly Bill fourteen, oh, nine, which were recent additions to general plan requirements, which require the city to consider and review and update the element of the safety element of the general plan to identify evacuation routes, their capacity, safety and viability under a range of emergency scenarios. Or also to consider potential evacuation locations for the population in those events. Uh, the law as adopted in AB seven, forty-seven set a deadline of January first, 2022 for adoption of this report. Um, AB fourteen, oh, nine was adopted recently this year, um, but did not extend that deadline. So we've been working on this the last several months in anticipation of the seven, forty-seven, uh, deadline, but had the curve ball of fourteen, oh, nine a few weeks ago that we had to work through. Um, once you adopt this, or if you do, uh, we'll be on a, an update cycle of every eight years, essentially in parallel with the housing element to consider updates to this, um, and other scenarios that we could add through. For purposes of this study, staff has focused on three scenarios that we think are, well, low probability would be the most likely scenarios that could most, uh, affect the community. Uh, these three are the suburban propane facility that's in Southeast Elk Grove along Grant Line, uh, that there'd be some sort of explosion and blast wave resulting fire from that facility that would cause, uh, various damage and detriment to property and life in the community. The second would be a train derailment and a potential toxic spill along the Uni-Pacific Railroad track. We've selected the track that runs north, south through central Elk Grove, essentially through Old Town, um, because of the surrounding characteristics and the switching locations that occur along that line. The third scenario we studied was a major flooding event resulting from a break of the Sacramento River levee and the impacts to Western Elk Grove as a result. Uh, you may have noticed in the report, this aligns and dovetails with the two hundred year flood plan analysis that we've talked about the last few years and the levy analysis, uh, of the Little Gato West Levy system. Um, I will point out though, that the overtopping that results here is not a reaction to a failure of the Luna West Levy. Um, essentially the water is just too much for that levy to handle. And again, we've discussed that at prior council meetings. So the report itself we're presenting would become a technical appendix to the general plan itself. Essentially that places it in chapter 12, where all these technical appendices live. It documents the potential disasters and provides recommendations for best practices and response and evacuation plan for residents, community members and staff. And again, each of these scenarios is tailored to the effects and the surrounding characteristics. Um, this plan was put together, uh, based on our consultant team and recommendations and input from staff, including our emergency operation staff over in the police department. Data that we've used to inform the plan has include an analysis of potential location and extent of the potential dangers and disasters we've outlined. Um, there's a lot of research that's gone into understanding what the characteristics would, of these disasters would be, typically for their derailment scenario and the suburban propane scenario, based upon similar incidences with maximum potential damage, uh, in other locations, uh, particularly in North America. We also then look at the present and maximum future traffic conditions to understand what the roadway features would be and conditions would be around those incidences and what facilities we'd have to take advantage of for the evacuation. We then define the evacuation area itself and begin looking at the population, the vulnerability characteristics that are in that evacuation area. As you'll see, uh, in the report, we talk about the census characteristics, the age of the population. Um, are there disabled populations that are there, um, certain characteristics of living conditions that we need to think about? And then the report talks about the potential evacuation locations, where those centers would end up being. Because each of these scenarios, uh, is a little bit fluid, particularly when you think about something like the train derailment scenario. Um, we are not able at this time to say exclusively, these are the locations where we would send people to. Those are going to be decisions that are made at the time. We do maintain a list of, uh, the different facilities that are eligible to be used as evacuation centers or evacuation locations. That list is regularly updated and maintained. It's cross-coordinated with county emergency operations, state emergency operations, the Red Cross, uh, and other disaster relief, uh, personnel. So we know where those can be and what their capacities are, what resources we can, uh, apply. And then we can make those decisions in real time through the emergency operations center and begin notifying folks and diverting them to those locations as needed. So I'll walk through briefly each of the three scenarios. Um, the first one against the suburban propane scenario. Um, I do want to highlight the difference here in comparison to some of the general plan policies that we have regarding, uh, facilities like suburban propane and the risk considerations that we have. Um, there's a bit of a difference here between a risk contour, uh, which is essentially the innermost circle. I apologize for the colors on the slide, but it's essentially a maroon color that's closest to this facility itself versus the hazard zone, which is the greater, the larger radius around that facility. Uh, we use a risk contour when we make land use decisions. Uh, that's based upon a variety of research that we've done, uh, about 15 years ago or so that inform the policies that are in the housing, uh, excuse me, in the safety element itself. The hazard zone's a broader area that looks at a variety of, um, certain scenarios and cases with these types of facilities. Um, essentially it creates the worst of the worst case scenario that we need to look at. Based upon this and the analysis of the population and, and conditions that exist around there, um, we end up identifying evacuation routes primarily in the north, east and west. And as you'll see in all three of these scenarios, we've identified that certain roadway facilities would require what we call contraflow lanes. Essentially, let's say you have a four lane facility, two lanes in each direction. In a contraflow condition, we would set up all four of those lanes to go in a common direction. So as you'll see on this exhibit, Promenade Parkway is an example, is placed into a contraflow condition, meaning that all traffic on it would flow northbound towards White Lock Parkway. The intent there is to maximize the capacity of that facility and getting as many people out as quickly as possible, um, in that direction. We don't do this with all roadways though. In some cases, we've left, uh, some facilities to be in their standard lane configuration, as you'll see with Elk Grove Florin. Um, this can be for a variety of reasons. One, overall demand, two, the capacity of the facility itself. And three, the ability to bring emergency personnel in along those corridors and be able to respond to the incident. Um, so based upon the analysis, uh, these are the lane configurations and the evacuation routes we've identified. Um, these maps have been updated the last few weeks as we came into hearing to include identification of the evacuation locations we could use. So you'll see here on this map, uh, we've identified, uh, Elk, excuse me, Elk Grove High School as a potential, uh, safety destination or evacuation location. Joseph Carr Middle School is also highlighted on here at the far top end of the map. Um, if we were to zoom out further, a variety of other facilities would be identified. But again, we don't want to dictate at this level today where those pathways would be, um, because there could be conditions based upon time of day, um, day of the week, variety of other circumstances, maybe the actual extent of the damage that, um, maybe we need to turn certain facilities on or off. And we'll identify those, uh, we'll direct people to those, um, at the time of the incident. Uh, next is the train derailment scenario. Again, this focuses on the line that runs through Old Town. Um, we identified this one because there are a number of switching locations. There's higher freight volumes along this corridor, um, as we saw a couple of years ago, um, when there was some flooding. Uh, to the south of us, there was a derailment along this line. Um, luckily it was just some soup that was spilled out and to the Consumers River area. Um, but certainly there could be an incident up here. Um, we do have trains that run through at fairly high speeds along this corridor as well. Um, so with, this is a little, um, I want to point out the mapping shows the sort of more pill shaped alignment along the entire corridor, but it does highlight along there four, five, six or eight locations or so that are in these, uh, hot pink squares. Those are where those switching locations are. So essentially what we're trying to identify is, uh, derailment could occur at any one of these locations along the corridor. But for ease of analysis, we've consolidated all of those into one boundary, um, rather than showing multiple versions or variations on the scenario. This presents us a little bit easier. So you could have a derailment at the far north end, at the south end closer to Grant Line, or at some point in between. Um, but again, we've analyzed this sort of at the broadest level for, um, sort of worst case scenario. Um, here are the evacuation routes. Um, we do have, um, Waterman Road being a contraflow lane condition northbound. Uh, there's, uh, Chevrolet Sway that goes contraflow into the East Elk Grove area. Uh, Valley Oak Lane would be set up into a contraflow westbound, as would Cammer. Um, you'll notice that we leave Elkhorn Boulevard open as a two-way condition. Again, emergency personnel being able to get in and out and just the overall condition of that facility. Um, there's a lot more opportunity to get folks in and out through the neighborhoods and out to places like Elkhorn Florin and Waterman, and then out beyond those contraflow conditions. And then for the last scenario, uh, again, this is on the west side and flooding. And this is the, uh, two hundred year flood plain essentially with the inundation as a result of the Sacramento River levee break. Um, this scenario, unlike the other two, has the longest lead time. So we're going to know that there's potential for this to happen because of weather reports, because of, of what we're seeing upstream at places like the Tower Bridge and the volumes that were coming down. What's happening at Folsom Dam, what's happening in Oroville, other locations. I'm sure Councilmember Sun, um, or Vice Mayor Sun could speak on this a little bit if he'd like to. Um, so as we see those conditions, we can start prepping in advance and be thinking about how we want to set things up. Getting folks, uh, accustomed to the idea that there may be an evacuation order we need to look at. Obviously lovely monitoring is a part of that as well. Um, but because of the conditions this area, um, Elkhorn Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard would be the primary exit routes. Um, we could run folks up through Dwight Road, uh, to the backside of, um, the Regional Treatment Plant and out Big Horn. So we have Big Horn identified as a contraflow condition to evacuate folks. Um, there could be some secondary flooding over along Franklin and Willard Parkway. So we've identified then Bilby and White Lock as contraflow conditions as well. There are a couple of recommendations out of the report. First off, and certainly encourage everybody on the, at the meeting tonight, if you've not done this, please do so. Sign up for the emergency notification system, Sacramento Alert at the link that's on the screen. Here you can register your cell phone, your landline or whatever, um, to call, text you, get email notifications if there's an emergency incident in your area. Um, you can identify up to five locations within the three county region that the system works, um, so that you can get notification, you can be, uh, receive that notification, be able to act upon it. Um, so it's a great system. We use it regularly to test it, to let folks know about certain alerts that may come up. Um, Chief may want to speak to this a little bit if you'd like. Um, and then we also identify a public awareness campaign that we can do mailers and workshops and pop-up events, it's festivals and community gatherings that are otherwise occurring. Opportunities to let folks know that there are safety measures in place, we have plans in place and what they can do to prepare, things like having a go-bag, um, having emergency rations at your house, being prepared for those incidences. Um, you know, what happens if power goes out, do you have batteries available, those sorts of things? Um, so a lot of work we can do over the coming years relative to that. So that concludes my presentation. Available for questions. And what we're asking for this evening is to find this action exempt from SEQUA and adopt the resolution of intent to amend the general plan to incorporate this report into the technical appendix. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, for that excellent report. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
For our attendees in the Zoom environment, now would be that opportunity to use the raise hand function for item eight point three. And it looks as though we do have a few folks that are signing up for this item. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, I wanted to note that there were no written comments that were received in relation to item eight point three prior to the meeting. I'll now redirect my attention back to our attendees and I will start pulling up the speaker timer. And I hit the wrong button. Pardon me.
Lynn Wheat, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, I wasn't going to tune into this meeting, but imagine my shock when I see that we're finally, the city is finally taking into consideration the dangers of suburban propane and the possibilities of an explosion or terrorist threat that's successful. So I'm happy to note that you now are identifying the scenario that I requested be included in our general plan when we started that entire updating process. And also opposed so many of the developments in that area that we're going to increase the density. So I'm just not sure, is it going to be mentioned those, that if there is a, a severe explosion there that won't be able to, to evacuate? And then also on the east side of Elk Grove, there's nothing mentioned about the flooding. And we did have some problems with the development in the area with our last rainstorms. So I'm guessing what's going to happen over there, you're going to improve the storm drains and we'll just dig some pits deeper to ignore the possibility of flooding in that area. So I thank you for, uh, um, finally acknowledging what's been a concern of mine for years. And I just hope, you know, if the zoo's close to that area, that we have a safety plan to evacuate those animals. Cause you know, it is about the animals. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next caller, please.
And that was our one, uh, public comment under item eight point three. I do not see any other raised hand functions. That'll conclude public comment for item eight point three.
All right, very good. Then I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council comments or questions.
Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I just want to, uh, well, first of all, I'll definitely support this, uh, resolution, uh, of intent. And, uh, just, uh, continue to ask staff to work with, um, the Stone Lake, Laguna West Lakeside area in, in keeping them informed. I think for that, just from a flooding perspective, I think communication and education is going to be the best, uh, defense uh, for, uh, for an emergency of, of a flooding nature. So, thank you for, uh, staff for all the great work in, in preparing us for this too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume, did you have any questions or comments?
No questions. Uh, my only comment would be great work, uh, by staff and you hope this is work that's never needed.
And, uh, Councilwoman Nguyen.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I, you know, as Mr. Jordan-
Thank you, ma'am. I, you know, as Mr. Jordan was reading the three scenarios, I don't know if. Any of you experienced this too, but I was just envisioning a horrible scene in my mind and thinking, oh my gosh, these really. Could happen. And so I want to thank you for bringing this forward. But I also to Ms. Lynn Wheat's point. I know we won't visit this again in eight years is what it seems like. I'm wondering if. As, as we talk about the zoo, we don't know if the zoo is coming or not, but she does bring up a good point. Will these be amended as we grow, as things go into place? Just wondering how that works. Does that get updated? And I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Jordan or our city manager.
So I can take a stab at it and let me actually jump over to the suburban propane slide. For a moment and it'll be helpful to have that. Map to look at. So this one's actually a good thing to look at for a couple of reasons. One, you'll notice on this exhibit. We've highlighted in gray those areas, those properties essentially where there's residential development. In that dark gray color, you'll notice that the. Area that's the Sterling Meadows subdivision, which would be on the far left side of the graphic, the west side of that outer purple ring. Isn't highlighted there. The reason being that the census data that we relied upon for this analysis is the two thousand cent, the two, the twenty ten census, excuse me. So that data does not exist. We could go through in two or three years and do some minor updates to this document. To then fold in. That census data right now it's in the process of being released. We have the first cut necessary to do the redistricting process. Both the state and local levels, but we don't have all the detailed analysis that will come later. That gets realigned based on the twenty twenty census and then the American Community Surveys that happen every year. So that may be something we'd want to look at in the future. I do want to point out that the perspective site for the zoo, though, is outside the boundary of this. This purple, the darker, the lighter purple color, this is the far outside edge of this. What we refer to here as the hazard zone, that five thousand foot radius. So. So that's something to keep in mind. It's not necessarily definitive, but we will be looking. Certainly with the zoo, there's a lot of different hazard issues you'd want to look at and be considering as we're planning that facility.
Wonderful. So it's not that we're not going to revisit this again for another eight years, but it would be brought back again. Should things come up that need our attention or whatnot.
Yeah, I think we could certainly keep an eye on it. And if it's something we thought should come forward for some modifications or cleanup, we could certainly do it. Obviously, if there's changes in state law, we would devalue those and the need to bring it forward. But for right now, it would be the eight year cycle.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's all that I have.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing up the zoo aspect. I'm sure we can look at some of our other cities. That do have zoos or what programs they utilize as well. The farther we go along in our study process. And if things should materialize, I imagine we would factor that in as well. My question. Is there a reason, and I'm sure there probably is, why did we not look at maybe wildfires? As one of the scenarios.
So that's a great question. The wildfire conditions in Elk Grove are different than what we would consider a wildfire condition. Or what the state considers a wildfire condition or at the statewide level. From a local condition, we do have grass fires, obviously. Those can occur. We've seen those happen in a number of instances, particularly when the more rural area of the city. Because you do have those more open grassland areas that have different level of property maintenance than we have more in the urban side. But the level and extent of that is vastly different. I don't want to speak for CSD Fire, but the level of response and ability to contain those sorts of incidences is a lot more localized. Than any of these three scenarios would be. In these three scenarios, you have more extensive populations. Larger areas of the city essentially that would be impacted as a result of one of these incidents occurring. So that's why we focused on these. If we were to then to look at, say, a wildland grass fire incident. We would need to pinpoint what would that scenario look like in terms of where that point of ignition would be and how far would it be spread before we had it? And look at some sort of mass evacuation. So it gets into a lot higher level of speculation than these three scenarios would be. If you think about a place like Paradise, certainly they had, and they had gone through a analysis like this. Prior to the big fire a few years ago, but there you've really got one issue and you can dive into it and look at it from several different angles. Here we have multiple issues and those fire incidences are going to be a lot smaller in scale.
And the reason I bring that up is my house backs up to the open space of the Stone Lake Wildlife Refuge. And I've lived there almost twenty years. And there's been at least three incidences that I can recall since I've lived there. Where the fields were ablaze and, I mean, it was contained within several hours. But it was definitely very alarming. And because California and wildfires, it's what leads and. You know, the news cycle all the time because that's just unfortunately the reality right now. With climate change and so many other factors that we do, we're at risk of wildfires. So it's good to know that, I guess, we're not as prone. Is what I'm hearing. It's more. Isolated grasslands and things like that.
Yeah, at this point, we think these three scenarios are the most prudent. We certainly could reevaluate that with the next update.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just that, again, I don't, you know, what, what are the conditions that we're looking for? Is it open space? Is it unmaintained brushes and, you know, what, what that is? I'm not an expert on that. But I bring that up because it is something that dominates a lot of the news cycle. And is what many communities throughout our state unfortunately have to reconcile with. Or wildfires. Now, in terms of, you know, you mentioned several facilities. Will we, is there coordination with some of our other, other agencies like the Elk Grove Unified and CSD? To what extent do we bring them into the discussions?
So Chief could probably talk about this a little bit more than I could, but in terms of our emergency operations planning, our staff do regularly coordinate. With a variety of agencies, again, state and local, a state and county emergency operations. Obviously, the school district would be on that list because many of their facilities double and are designed to double as emergency evacuation centers. So those folks are all on those lists for those regular coordination. On occasion, we do at a staff level operate what we call tabletop exercises, where we will. Basically run out a scenario over a twenty four, thirty, six hour scenario in a compressed. Four, six hour window just to train ourselves and practice and how would we respond? And we bring in often staff from state OES or county OES, fire departments. Others is necessary in order to game out those scenarios and make sure that we're looking at it from the vantage points we need to and updating our skills.
All right, very good. Excellent report. Thank you. So I will now entertain a motion here.
Move to adopt the resolution of intention.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
That roll call vote, we'll start with Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of intent of item eight point three will pass four oh.
All right, very good. Mr. Jordan, you are back up.
So as the council is aware, we are limited to the number of general plan amendments we can do on a calendar year basis to four. And as we are at the end of the year, we have an opportunity to use our last one. As you saw in the last two items, we have. Two general plan amendments queued up for you this evening and you've now adopted resolutions of intent for both of them. So this item will, eight point four, will then consolidate those into one formal action. Again, it's the housing element updates for the implementation actions that you saw a moment ago. And the safety element update with the evacuation route planning study. Available for questions if you have them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jordan. I'll declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
This will be the opportunity for our participants in the Zoom environment to comment and use the raise hand feature for item eight point four. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, there were no written comments received prior to the meeting in relation to item eight point four. As I look over our list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. That'll conclude public comment opportunity on item eight four.
All right, I will declare that the hearing is now closed and open it up for any council comments, questions. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
And that roll call vote, we'll start with Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The resolution of item eight point four will pass four oh.
All right, great. Next item, please.
Take us to section nine, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item nine point one. Which is to consider a resolution approving the artwork proposed, selected by the review panel and approved by the Arts Commission for the Laguna Creek Trail mural.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager and the staff liaison for the Elk Grove Arts Commission. It's my pleasure this evening to come to you with the proposal. Recommended by the review panel and approved by the Arts Commission for a mural at Laguna Creek. I'm going to. Share my screen. Are you able to see my screen?
Indeed, if you just want to move into the slideshow version, you're in the kind of design mode right now.
How's that? Nope, doing weird stuff again. Hang on a second. Let me switch this. Interesting that my computer does this.
You have an option under display settings up in the menu that just says to slideshow.
Swap presenter view and slideshow. Let's try that. How's that?
Looks great.
All right.
Got audio, got visual, please proceed.
Certainly. The Arts Commission expressed some interest in creating a mural along the Laguna Creek Trail to beautify the area in twenty twenty as part of their. COVID activities. They worked with Public Works to identify a suitable location. We then worked with the city's Trails Committee to request their support in selecting artwork. So this is a joint project actually between the Arts Commission and the Trails Committee. We issued a request for proposal in March of twenty twenty one and received. Three artists' proposals for the mural. And then in July twenty twenty one, two art commissioners and one trails committee member reviewed the artwork. In August, they went back to the artist. They asked for some revisions to the original proposal. The artist submitted in September, the Art Commission approved, as did their review. And now we are in December looking at a possible mural for Laguna Creek. This is the location selected by the review panel as well as the Arts Commission. This should be somewhat familiar. It's on the way to City Hall. It crosses Laguna Creek Trail. It's heavily utilized by. Cyclists as well as walkers in the community and residents. It is a very highly visible area. It has been tagged several times according to Public Works. And so it would be ideal for artwork to be placed here. The recommended artist is named Anthony Tony Burns. He is an Elk Grove resident for over twenty years. He has degrees in drawing and painting and digital imaging from California State East Bay. He has completed over forty large scale murals in Elk Grove for the school district. This is some of his previous work that may be familiar to some of you. This is the mural proposal created by Mr. Burns. He will, this is a rendering, but he will actually paint these images on the bridge itself. The images represent animals, flora and fauna that you might see along the Laguna Creek Trail. The budget for this project is five thousand dollars and includes artist fees and materials. The budget is being paid for by the Arts Commission's annual budget. That is all of the information that I have. I am happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you for that presentation. I will open up the public comment opportunity.
For our members in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to speak on item nine point one. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, there were no written comments received in relation to item nine point one prior to the meeting. And as I look over our list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. So that will conclude public comment opportunity on item nine point one.
All right, great. Then I'll close the public comment opportunity and open it up for any questions, comments. From council colleagues.
No questions, no comments on my end.
How's that for him?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a quick question, Lana. I didn't, I, I'm assuming, but I'm not sure, is the mural proposed to go along, you know, essentially the bottom edge of the. The bridge along the, where traffic flows and not necessarily on the trail. Okay.
Yes. So basically, when you cross the street or you're on the bridge itself, you'll see that as you move through the bridge. There is a pedestrian and walker crosswalk that goes across there. The commission felt like this would be a highly visible area to invest in some beautification.
Great, thank you. I'll move the item, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion. And the second, Vice Mayor Suen, did you have any questions, comments?
Just wanted to say it's a beautiful mural. I can't wait to see it. It'll look fantastic on that bridge. So look forward to it.
I agree and I'm familiar with the artists and the great work of the school district. So looking forward to seeing this mural. So we do have a motion in a second.
And for the roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of item nine point one will pass four oh.
All right, great. Next item, please.
Take us on to item nine point two, which is receive and file the Elk Grove Tourism Marketing District Annual Report for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
All right, Ms. Brown.
Good evening. Erin will be presenting here in a second, but I just want to give a short introduction to the item. So this is the annual report to council that Visit Elk Grove typically provides. I'm really excited that we're going to have a robust presentation from Erin, our executive director tonight. As you remember, the city council initially formed, guided us to form the district in twenty fifteen. For an initial five year term that concluded in twenty twenty. At which time we elected to renew the district and we did a longer term for seven years. So we'll have the tourism district formed here until twenty twenty seven. And currently the city contracts with Visit Elk Grove to manage the tourism district. And the marketing name for Visit Elk Grove is Explore Elk Grove, which a lot of you may already know. And my current role with the organization is board chair and I act as the city's liaison to the tourism district, providing oversight as needed. And as I mentioned, tonight's staff report, there is included the technical report. But Erin Vow, our executive director, will be presenting kind of overall look for the activities that the organization has done over the last year. However, if you guys have any questions, council members, on the report and the technicalities of the staff report, I'm happy to answer them. I've already said Erin's name a couple of times, but Erin Vow is our current executive director. We hired her about a year ago. She's on the line here and will take it over. But I just want to say a couple of things. I've been really impressed with Erin's energy and her enthusiasm. Not only for Elk Grove, but the tourism world itself and her management style has been very refreshing and visionary. And I'm so glad to have her at Explore Elk Grove as our partner to help the city continue to grow its tourism efforts. And with that, I'll let Erin take it from here.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the introduction, Rachel. I appreciate everyone's time and I'm pleased to present our annual report for Explore Elk Grove. Over the past year, we have had the opportunity to add staff and to diversify our board. Our board leadership includes leaders from the city CSD, our hoteliers and our food and beverage partners. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge them and their roles that they have on our board. Board Chair is Rachel Brown with the City of Elk Grove. Our Secretary is Kimberly Albright with the Hilton Garden Inn Elk Grove. Our Treasurer is James Linton with the Extended Stay of America. Deborah Northup with Fairfield Inn by Marriott. Director Ken Jalshaw with the Hampton Inn and Suites. Tiffany Kintenar with the Holiday Inn. Mike Wakeman with McConnell Estates Winery. Phil Lewis with Consumers CSD. And Yolanda Garcia with Cafe Elk Grove. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen right now. To open up the PowerPoint presentation. And to continue and to introduce you to our mission, which is to create and deliver value to our stakeholders, including visitors. The tour industry, the community and local government. We strive to elevate the assets that we have in Elk Grove, uncover opportunities that drive economic impact. And to enhance the quality of life for visitors in the community alike. Over the past year and throughout the pandemic, we have shifted focus to ensure that we are supporting our locals and our community. As we all know, we all prosper when we do business together. Some of the key initiatives and campaigns. That we launched this year included. that we launched this year included, in the winter, our Elk Grove Restaurant Week, which was a ten-day dining event. Our spring Y-Bi local program, which complemented the, or I'm sorry, our spring Elk Grove Local Pass, which complemented the Y-Bi local program. And our corks and caps of Elk Grove. We also established our go-to event calendar, which can be found online, and local community businesses can update their listings, add events, and introduce what they have to offer to our community and visitors alike. Restaurant Week, as I mentioned before, was a ten-day event, January fifteenth through the twenty-fourth. We invited locals to experience delicious local dishes, amazing flavors, and great cuisine. It looked a little different this year because of the pandemic and our limitations on the ability to dine inside restaurants. So we really pushed and encouraged our community to still spend money in the community to grab takeout and to dine outdoors. The main goal was so that our community could also take the night off from cooking by grabbing the takeout and participating with the great program. To highlight a few of the past performances for that ten-day event, we had thirty-two restaurants, seventeen hundred pass holders, and five hundred and thirty-five redemptions. We had multiple daily pass winners as well, which encouraged individuals to use a pass and to shop locally at our restaurants. The Y-Bi local program was a collaborated effort between the City of Elk Grove, the Chamber of Commerce, and ourselves at Explore Elk Grove. It complemented the Y-Bi local program that the City of Elk Grove launched previously. We are proud that we collectively launched the program, accepted ninety-plus businesses that signed up, and in categories that included arts, beer, wine, coffee, tea, dining, local services, shopping, and wellness. With the ninety businesses that signed up, we saw two hundred and forty-nine product redemptions, a hundred and seventy-five check-ins at merchants, nineteen hundred pass holders, and twenty-four winners. These numbers continue to grow as this program has a year shelf life, and we continue to revamp it as we go, and we plan to see it continue to grow for the next year to come. This program encourages shopping within our city, which limits, which ultimately helps the local businesses keep people employed and supports local families. Over the past year, we have worked hard to deliver marketing initiatives. In review, our website, many social media and newsletter reach engagement continues to grow. In order to service our hotel community and our partners, we continue to monitor how occupancy happens to increase and decrease throughout the pandemic and over the year. In July 2020, our occupancy took a major dip, but continued to start to climb at about sixty point eight percent. It climbed through October, declined back in December, along with some of the ebbs and flows of the pandemic and the county regulations. And it went back up in January and has steadily climbed through now. For the year fiscal year 2023, July 2021, our occupancy was a total of sixty-eight percent. Our average daily rate was one hundred and sixteen dollars, and we saw a demand of a hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two room nights for the fiscal year. To serve our hoteliers, the hospitality community, meeting planners, and sports events rights holders, we expanded our services to include our one-stop-shop program, which includes resources such as venue research, proposal collection and assistance with contracting, hotel selection and housing, site visit coordination, local marketing, local organizing committee formation, and our welcome program. We encourage meeting planners and sports events rights holders to submit RFPs through our website to review available meeting facilities and sports facilities on our website, and to submit RFPs so that we can help be their one-stop-shop when selecting a venue in Elk Grove. Our goals for 2021 to 2022 are to continue to build relationships and rapport with Visit California, the Gold Country Tourism Association, Visit Sacramento, the Sacramento Sports Commission, local partners, and the business community. We currently partner and work very closely with the city, CSD, the Chamber, our wineries and breweries, our restaurants and shops, and we continue to see the partnerships grow. Some of our goals include to position Elk Grove as a unique niche destination. Ultimately, we are here to tell Elk Grove's story, introduce visitors to our culturally rich community, and to drive economic impact, to increase the competitiveness of Elk Grove by broadening our appeal, and to be the change agent for the tourism industry and the community. We'll be focusing on target market segments, which include business travel for small meetings and regional events as well as trainings, sports travel through organized sports, through youth, high school collegiate, senior, and health and wellness as well as fitness. We want to capitalize on the events that are compressing from the Sacramento market. To name a few would be the Wine and Grape Symposium, the Aftershock Concert, Future Farmers of America State Convention that's coming up in March, and many other events that we can capitalize on and book here in our community and show all the great things that we have to offer. For leisure, we want to focus on special events, enhancing the events that are here in town, supporting those, and growing our own. Also, promoting our beer and wine in caps and corks of Elk Grove, and also putting the Consume Miss River Preserve in Still Lake National Bar Refugee on the map. We look forward to enhancing our story and telling the world about Elk Grove. Ultimately, I want to thank you all for having a chance to present this report to you today and for allowing us to be your marketing and tourism association here in Elk Grove. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and we look forward to the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that excellent report. I will now open up the public comment opportunity.
And for our attendees in the Zoom environment, this would be your opportunity to use the raise hand function for discussion and public comment for item nine point two. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting. And I just have to see, we've got a lot of activity on the screen. I've got to get over to our list of attendees, and I do not see on our list of attendees the raised hand function being utilized, so that will conclude public comment opportunity on item nine point two.
All right, very good. Then I will go ahead and open it up for a council comments. We will start with Councilmember Hume.
No comments. Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wen.
No comments. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, Erin, thank you for your work. We enjoyed our time over at at the event highlighting our breweries and wineries earlier this year. So look forward to continue our partnership with you, with Explore Oak Grove.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And then just to add, I'm looking forward to speaking to the group, I think it's next week, and sharing some of my perspectives, as I said, on the Visit California Board of Directors, as one of our statewide commissioners, and share some of those perspectives and, you know, I can tell you that our, the tourism industry and hospitality industry was one of the hardest hit during COVID. And, but we are resilient, and we are coming back, and we'll come back strong every year. And so I'm looking forward to collaborating with you and sharing some of those insights from as a statewide commissioner. And there's great things happening in our city, and I'm sure you'll be able to add our casino here soon to part of that tourism, marketing, and outreach. So as the city continues to grow, we will see some wonderful new amenities that we get to share with with the rest of our greater community. So thank you again. I look forward to seeing you next week.
Thank you.
My screen is showing very bizarre things. I don't know if it's
And actually, Ms. Vow, if we could ask for you to stop here, I think that'll
Okay. I was getting all kinds of things. I'm thinking something bad's about to happen.
No, it's still holding strong, so.
All right, thank you. All right, looks good. Thank you again, and I'll see you next week.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries. So we'll go on to our next item then.
It goes on to item nine point three, which is receive an update on the relocation of the Elk Grove Library and provide direction on design and next steps as appropriate.
Evening, Mayor and Council, Christopher Jordan. As Jason mentioned, this item is an update in the planning and design for the relocation of the Elk Grove Library. Earlier this year, the council authorized the purchase of the former Rite Aid Building at Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman. This building provides for increased building area and parking and opportunities for expanded services for the community. In partnership with Sacramento Public Library, we've begun to plan what the space will look like and what services and features will be included. I'm joined this evening by Rivka Sasse, Director of the Sacramento Public Library and her Facilities and Operations Staff, as well as Carolyn Calberg from Group Four Architecture, who has been leading the design effort and will be presenting the current work effort. So I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn, who has the presentation, and I'll walk through it. Carolyn.
Thank you, CJ. I'll share my screen. Thank you for the introduction, CJ. Mayor and City Council, on behalf of the Sacramento Public Library and the City of Elk Grove. Tonight, we are very excited to present the project update for the Elk Grove retrofit project. We would like to thank our project management team, including the Library Director Rivka Sasse, Deputy Director Jared Hillier, Facilities Project Manager David Hillier, as well as the other library staff, and of course, the City of Elk Grove representatives, including CJ CJ Jordan for your tireless effort and also your collaboration on this exciting project. And of course, the excellent foresight of the city to purchase this former Rite Aid Building for the purpose of this exciting, exciting new project. Tonight, the purpose is to receive the presentation regarding the Elk Grove Library retrofit project for an update on the program and conceptual design phase and provide comments on both the program and the design update. Tonight, I will go through a project overview and a brief summary of our participation to date. You will also receive the design update, including the program, interior floor plan, as well as our thoughts on interior theming and branding, and briefly next step. So just as a project overview, the current Elk Grove Library has outgrown its current location in Old Town. And so the Sacramento Public Library and the city have partnered to relocate this library to a new location on the corner of Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman Road in Old Town. And this will be primarily an interior renovation of a former Rite Aid Building in about seventeen thousand, three hundred square feet. Design is currently underway, and the project is anticipated to be bid ready in 2023. Now, on this image, you can see a few images of the exterior as well as the current interior of the space. We started this project in August with our project initiation, programming, and code analysis. Now, in October, we moved into conceptual design, where we began working on bubble diagrams and floor plan layouts. We're now at the beginning of the thematic design phase with the floor plan and programming that we would like to share, share with, share with you. For the participation to date, we have done community outreach during the programming phase at the, both existing library and at Food Truck Mania, we've done an online survey as well, that was open to all community members. We also did teen outreach at the, at the Youth Commission in October, and have had focus groups and technical meetings with the Friendsville Library, library staff, city building, planning, fire and safety, as well as an integrated design workshop with the city, city staff, library staff, as well as our whole design team, including our MEP, Structural and Telecommunications Engineers. Today, we have, of course, our presentation that is happening right now, and tomorrow we will be going to the Sacramento Public Library Authority Board, and we will be coming back to both the City Council and the Authority Board at the end of January for a final thematic design presentation. Some of the programs and activities that were highlighted as high priorities in our community survey, as well as our open house, include having, include having a lending library, so like a, for example, a tool library or other, other library of things, highlighting art and culture, a emphasis on health and being active, as well as DIY, do-it-yourself classes. All of these programs and activities can be incorporated into the, the new, the new space. We're excited to show you how. In addition, we also asked the community to weigh in on their interior design preferences of what they would like, the new interior space look and feel like, and the top two priorities were to be cozy and comfortable and also warm and inviting for the top two, followed by having an indoor-outdoor connection. In our Youth Commission, some of the top activities of what they would like to do at the library are collaborating with group projects, having an informal hangout space, tutoring, tutoring space, the ability to have programming for college readiness, career and job readiness, and then also entertainment, music, and movies. So now moving into the design update. So from the information that we gathered during the programming stage from the community, from the, from the teens, as well as extensive meetings with staff, as well as the city, we came, we developed this draft program, which includes entry space, a marketplace and bookstore, which I'll explain in a minute, a large meeting room for a hundred and twenty seated assembly style, group study room spaces, an incubator space, spaces for adult, children, and teens, and then of course, staff and support space. So included would be in the program, the first, the entry marketplace and the Friendsville Library Bookstore. So upon entering the building, within the entry would be the welcome desk, self-checkouts, book, a book drop, as well as a really prominent location for the Friendsville Library, Library Books. In addition, would be the marketplace, and that is kind of like the bookstore-type feeling to the library, a lot of face-out displays of new, popular materials, seasonal collections that are rotated in and out, as well as having technology at your fingertips, short-use computer stations, as well as seating areas. One of the projects I'd like to highlight is on the bottom right here, and that is actually a transformation of an existing grocery store into a new library that we worked on in Kansas. Meeting room spaces will also be included, both large, the large community space that I, that I mentioned, as well as smaller group study spaces. We're planning on four group study rooms that can hold about four, four each. And these small group study rooms would be equipped with flat-screen TVs, the large meeting room with a projector and screen. Also included is what we're calling an incubator space. This is what we are seeing as a flexible classroom space that is adaptable over time. So this can be used for the do-it-yourself classes that were high priority, used for, also used for arts and crafts, for some of these health and active classes as well. So it's really a space that can be transformed throughout the day, and then also over time is the need of the community. So it's really a space that can be transformed throughout the day, and then also over time is the need of the community changing over time. In addition, will be distinct areas of what for adults. So the adult area will house the adult uh um uh, physical book collection, as well as seating areas and computers. The teen space, we're seeing this as a really vibrant and fun space with furniture that is uh fun for for teens and works well for these collaborative environments, hangout spaces, uh, individual, as well as as group study. Children's space also being a really fun and vibrant vibrant space, full of discovery around every every corner, and also housing the children, the children's collection, furniture and computers. This is a floor plan overview of what we are planning for the new space, so the taking all of the program elements that I just discussed and putting them into in the actual floor plan. So just to orient you, north is actually to the right of your screen. Um, on the right is would be Elk Grove Boulevard, on the bottom is Waterman is Waterman Road, and the existing parking lot is at the top of your screen. The main entry would be the um the main entry would be in the its current location, not moving the main entry from its original Rite Aid location. And you walk into the entry space, I and you have the Friendsville Library bookstore, the book drop, self-check uh stations and holds material, service desk. And a little bit. The service desk would be located in a prominent location, really at the crux of the entry and marketplace with great views of the entry space, the teen space, children's area and adult area. The marketplace would uh would follow the whole length of the building and terminate in within the the incubi- the incubator space or this flexible classroom space. Both the incubator space and the meeting room shown in red here would be accessible after hours. And so when the library is closed, there would be a secure line, um, a roll down gate between the incubator and meeting room space, so that both of these rooms could be used together or separately after hours um with this after hours entrance, and there would be the the restroom, as well as an all gender restroom located back here to service both of those those meeting room spaces, feeling that that's a a great amenity for the community. During lib- uh during library hours, of course, the meeting room and the incubator space will be opening open for uh library specific programming, as well as for uh as for groups and organizations. And when these spaces are not in use, we really um thought it would be a great idea to be able to open them up to the marketplace. We're seeing the doors between the meeting room and the marketplace and incubator space in the marketplace as um uh sliding doors with a lot of glass, so that the meeting room could uh become more of an informal reading room or a teen hangout space or a uh homework help center, but not being used for formal active or formal library activities. Um, now just going to the other side of the marketplace, the adult, uh, we have the adult area in the in the back here. And a part of the adult area will be a passport office for passport processing. Four group study rooms are located in the library, two directly off of the marketplace. And then the other two directly off of the teen area, and then in between the teen and children's area. The children's area is blue with an exterior door going to a uh enclosed library, library patio for outdoor programming for kids. And then the teen space, uh, bringing us back to the front, is located uh up front um in a in a prominent uh prominent location near the entry, and also has the opportu- opportunity for some outdoor programming. Uh, back of house spaces are in the are in gray, so we have staff space for the automated materials handling and circulation staff um up front and then back of house library, library staff on the south side. As part of our uh design effort and moving into schematic design, we're looking at um creating a theming or branding opportunities for for the library um in and in more of an abstract sense than um than a true literal literal sense, but the theming that we're looking at is old town, looking at the past, present and future, and really the the heritage of of the project and its location in Old Town. So the Old Town concept captures this character of the Old Town uh of of Elk Grove, it highlights the bustling Main Street, the Old Town District. And so we really want to incorporate some of the timeless materiality of the of Old Town, the vibrant spirit of Main Main Street. I'm looking at how Elk Grove has evolved from the um indigenous peoples, also being a stop along the railroad, to also the agricultural industry in the Delta, and then um a burgeoning business district. And so taking cues from that, we are looking at theming ideas for creating the main the Main Street as the being the the market, the marketplace, uh, being this bustling Main Street area, uh, taking cues from some of the 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 materials of and the vibrancy of means of Main Street. Um, looking at the um meeting and incubator space as being an opportunity to ha- highlight the town hall con- uh concept of Old Town. The adult area being more of a plaza, plaza or hub. Um, the the children's area being an opportunity to explore some of the agricultural themes, the delta and the flora and fauna that is native to the Elk Grove area, and the teen area as the vibrant uh entertainment district. And we're seeing, as you see, um, in some of these images, using uh the colors and theming and furniture and fabrics and materials lighting to help create these different um vibrancy and energy and energies in these different areas. Some of the colors that we're looking at as part of this Old Town concept are bringing in the warmth of 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 brick and wood, oranges and um saturated reds, as well as some of the cooler tones of the agricultural and outdoors with the greens and the blues and the yellows. So we'll be continuing to explore the explore the theme as we move into the next phases of the project. And so for the next steps, um, we will, as I mentioned, we'll be going to the Authority Board uh tomorrow, while we have um more outreach uh with the Friendsville Library and staff coming up in January, and then um, the next time you'll see us will be the schematic design presentation at the end of of January. So with that, I will um open it up to uh turn it back over to CJ and any questions.
Good. Thank you, Carolyn. Um, so Madam Mayor, obviously want to take public comment, but there's any comments or questions from the council, we're available for them. Um, and as you saw in the presentation, we anticipate coming back to you next month um with the refinements based upon the outreach we've been doing now, some other outreach that's going on, um, and be taking it forward into schematic.
All right. Thank you. Wow. Amazing report. Um, I will open up the public comment opportunity.
So for our attendees in the Zoom environment, now would be the opportunity to use the raise hand function for item nine point three to provide public comment. Mayor Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, there were no written comments received prior to the meeting in relation to item nine point three. As I look over at our attendee list, I do not see any of the raised hand functions being utilized. So that will conclude public comment opportunity on item nine point three.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up for any questions or comments from my colleagues. We'll start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, my first question is, did I read that correctly, that you're not anticipating being uh ready to have this project go out to bid until twenty twenty-three?
So the schedule we're looking at right now would have the schematic design done in about February, March. Um, at that point, it becomes a resources question. We're discussing at this point um transitioning the project from uh library authority oversight, which is where the contract with Group Four is sitting right now, over to the city. Um, staff won't be available to uh work on it until the first of the fiscal year, but they're lined up and starting to become engaged. Um, at that point, Carolyn and her team will need several months to pull the construction documents together. You know, six, eight months Carolyn can talk about what that process looks like, but we're anticipating early twenty-three as a timeframe for it. Um, also, we mentioned in the staff report that in terms of the funding scheme, there is a new state grant that was, uh, the program was adopted in the recent budget. Uh, that is an excellent opportunity for us to get some outside funding for this project. Um, there was a pre-application process that SPL took the lead in preparing and submitting a few weeks ago. We're waiting on feedback from the state on that now. Anticipate that grant application window opening either very late this month or early next year. Um, that'll probably take several months to go through, collect, analyze, and then announce winners. So that funding probably won't be available until early twenty-three anyway. Um, Jared Keller from SPL is on the meeting this evening. He's been tracking that a lot more, can answer your questions if you have them. Um, so just thinking about all those logistics involved, and we want to make sure we're doing this right, we're making the investments uh correctly um before we go out and rush to construction.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. And you you answered the question, which is, it's not necessarily the work that's going to take that long. It's it's not going to take that long until we're actually ready to to move forward um with execution of the project. Uh, and with respect to the the final uh mention that you made there, uh, you know, as far as doing it right in the design of it. First of all, Carolyn, excellent um uh effort that's being put into this as far as the outreach and and trying to be responsive and and be creative, and how do you tie in some of the themes of of Elk Grove's uh and 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 the different needs of the spaces. Um, one thing that I would say in looking at the floor plan uh that you put forward, and this is just goes back to my construction uh mind background, is the uh having the family restroom completely divorced from all other plumbing in that building is going to be a significant added cost that I don't know that I Christopher is smirking at me. I don't know, because I'm down in the weeds on the actual little design here, but that stood out to me as as uh something that could uh maybe be done a little more efficiently.
Actually, Councilmember Hume, I'll go ahead and say we've already looked into that. There's actually a drain very proximate to that location, because the coolers for the refrigerators were along that Waterman uh road wall. So all that's been looked at already.
Then I stand corrected. Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Excellent job and uh Godspeed. We can compress that schedule and and get that building activated sooner.
Yeah, couldn't agree more. Uh, Councilwoman, when?
Thank you, ma'am. I have no questions, just that, uh, what a amazing, um, you know, just building it's gonna be. It seems like it's got everything. I feel like I could even live there. Everything you can think of is already there, so really excited to see this come and um can't wait. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Looks beautiful. Can't wait also. Thank you very much.
Echoing the same comments, I sit on the library authority board, so looking forward to that meeting tomorrow. I see Rivka Sass on the line here. Thank you, Rivka. I don't know if you want to speak or not, but um this perhaps might be one of your last meetings, if I'm not mistaken. Um, for your upcoming retirement, so I'll use this opportunity to thank you for your service um with the library authority and all the tremendous work that you've done over the years. Um, big, big shoes to fill, and you've just uh left an amazing legacy in our greater community and region. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, cannot be said enough. And then also, you know, I just cannot wait for this library to open. Just in these preliminary designs and getting that feedback, it is an incredible, incredible asset to the community. And I can see this being utilized from all age groups. And I'm so glad that we moved forward with a new location and reimagined what a library could be in all of its fullest potential than the current location. I do see a hand raised, I thought, from our Vice Mayor. Um, yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, when I heard you say Rivka was on the phone, I just might wanted to just wish Rivka well and thank her as you did for all her service, her years of service and innovation in in the library space. So the library of things and a lot of creative things that you've done over the years, Rivka, to to make a library continue to be a special place in this internet age.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. I um I think this project is fabulous, and I see how dynamic Elk Grove is. I was uh down there on Saturday with a sight hound club. Uh, many of you know I have a retired rescued greyhound, and there were about thirty of us with all kinds of dogs, and there was a swim meet going on, I guess. People were swimming in what seemed like fifty degree weather, and it just reminded me that Elk Grove is such a dynamic, amazing community. And this library is exactly what a dynamic, amazing community needs. It's going to be fabulous. And one reason I love it so much is that we are doing creative reuse of an existing building. And I think that is so important in these times. So you are all just heroes and sheros in my mind for uh supporting this and for helping us make this wonderful space and activating it in an area of Elk Grove that is truly, truly wonderful. The the Old Town area is again, another dynamic and incredible space. You, you're all just the best. Thank you, and thanks for the kind words.
Thank you, Rivka. I will see you tomorrow at our meeting.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
All right. Um, thank you again for that presentation. Just very excited about where everything's at. I do wish that we could expedite that timeline, but I'm sure I'm not the only one, so we'll get there um thoughtfully. Thank you. All right. Um, with that, we will move on to our next item.
That will take us on to item nine point four, which is consider a resolution approving a conditional loan commitment of three million four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars for the proposed Cornerstone Village Affordable Housing Project, sequel exempt.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Let me get my presentation here. Yes, there we go. So uh tonight's item is uh considering a loan commitment for our Cor- Cornerstone Village project. Um, by way of background, uh, tonight we'll be considering using um our Affordable Housing Fund. Uh, that is a fund that is collected um from new market rate development, both residential and non-residential development. Um, and historically, we've used the fund primarily for uh subsidizing new apartment construction. Um, we've done about fourteen projects in eighteen hundred units since the city incorporated. Um, obviously, as we saw in the housing element discussion earlier, there's still a great deal of unmet need there. Um, so uh we plan to continue to invest heavily in um new apartment construction. Uh, so the Cornerstone Village project is one of three um projects that we considered this year. Um, the other two being the villages at Bilby and the Lila Projects, um, both of which are seeking uh the their additional tax credit um funding to move forward. But Cornerstone Village um is an eighty-four unit apartment complex. It would be a first for the city in that it has twenty-one units that are set aside specifically for adults with intellectual and or developmental disabilities. Um, that's a population that has had a lot of difficulty in the city, um, finding housing that's affordable. Um, and we're hearing um from a lot of uh parents of adults with these disabilities um that they're concerned about what will happen when they're no longer around to assist with caring, um, caring for their their children or family members. Um, it also includes nine units for people experiencing homelessness. Um, this is a very affordable project, so of the uh of the total eighty-four units in it. I see I didn't do my totals quite right on this slide, but um most of the units in this project are extremely low income units. Um, and then it also has some very low income units, and uh and then the remainder are uh just standard low income units at the seventy percent level. Um, it will have onsite property management um for the project as well, so. The project amenities, uh, we have a um clubhouse, a large clubhouse on this property um with a multipurpose room and a demonstration kitchen, um, an outdoor courtyard. Um, actually, two of them, if you count the one that's uh shared with the uh adjacent church property. Um, the uh units have a universal design focus to them, so making sure that they're accessible for people with uh physical disabilities as well, and onsite laundry facilities. And onsite laundry facilities. Um, and one of the, um, one of the, uh, most innovative things about this project is that it will have a full-time resident services coordinator onsite, um, who will coordinate services for all the residents. But with a special focus for, um, those folks who are, um, formerly homeless and, uh, the adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So, uh, this project is located on a portion of the light of the Valley Church property, um, along Bruceville, south of Laguna Boulevard. So this is a really innovative site, um, in that what will happen is that the church property, um, which has a cell tower on it now, which is a separate parcel. Um, so the, the cell tower will remain on its own parcel, um, but the rest of the property will be split into two legally separate parcels. But, um, with design elements that, that run through, um, and make them complimentary. Um, and so this is a reuse of a property that's currently a, a little underutilized. Um, it's near a lot of, uh, a lot of things that would benefit residents, um, right across the street from the Midland Harriet Eddy Middle School. Um, very walkable to the Target Shopping Center and the other shopping up there at Laguna and Bruceville. Um, it's bordered by, um, market rate housing, um, single-family homes and some apartment complexes. Um, to the north is a housing complex that is owned by, um, the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency. And then across the street, the apartment complex there, Village Crossing, is a mix of low-income, um, and mostly market rate units. Um, it's also pretty close to the, uh, Wacker Center and the park there. So this is a, um, this is a picture of the site plan. Um, the developer, uh, has re, uh, reworked this a couple of times in order to, um, meet the planning requirements and the fire department's, uh, goals for access. And so as you can see here, there's an attempt to shield the property from the single-family homes using some trees and parking. Um, and you can see that they, um, try to maintain a connection, um, to the church facility. Um, and have planned some shared uses there between the spaces. So the clubhouse could be used, um, occasionally by the church for some of their activities. And likewise, the church spaces, um, could be, uh, could be used for some of the apartment communities' activities. Um, there's an onsite playground and you can see, um, kind of the center of the property there is the large clubhouse. So this project is proposed to be developed, um, in partnership by the John Stewart Company and, um, Ablelight Lutheran Communities. Um, which was Bethesda Lutheran Communities when we started, uh, started considering it, but has updated their name to Ablelight. Um, so total project cost on this is about fifty-two million dollars. Um, it is on a per-unit basis. It's one of the more expensive projects. Um, which reflects, uh, the, uh, deep subsidy, um, to make the units affordable to folks who are only earning twenty percent or thirty percent of the median income. Um, the city of subsidy per affordable unit is about forty-one thousand or about seven percent of the total cost, which is consistent percentage-wise with what we've tended to fund on other projects. Um, this project has by far the most funding sources of any project that we've funded in the city's history. Um, the developer, um, the John Stewart Company is looking at using tax credits, at using HCD's multifamily housing program. Having a private mortgage on it, um, taking some of the developer fee that they could earn on the project and contributing it back to the project to help further subsidize it. And then also looking at getting some funding from the California Department of Developmental Services. Um, another HCD funding source and the Federal Home Loan Bank. So this is a lot of funding sources to put together. Um, but this is something that we'd ask developers to really look at going forward so that we could keep the city contribution lower and fund more projects, um, by leveraging some of the other sources that are available. So, um, ultimately, the, um, projects that from our RFP process that were asked to move forward submitted loan applications. And that loan application gives staff and the Affordable Housing Committee more information needed to assess benefits and risks. Um, so we look at the development team's qualifications. Um, we look at the thirty-year project, um, financial projections, um, and a market study. Um, for the units, um, and then the loan application is reviewed, uh, ultimately by the Affordable Housing Committee. So when we looked at this project, um, some of the strengths are that the development team is really very experienced. Um, the developer, the John Stewart Company owns more than six thousand units in Northern California, although this would be their first project in Elk Grove. Um, and their project team has worked together on other projects in the region. Um, including they have a project underway in Sacramento right now with a lot of the same partners, um, architects, construction contractor, and so on. Um, and then the nonprofit partner, Ablelight Lutheran Communities, um, has extensive experience with special needs populations. They really specialize in adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And they have other projects, um, throughout the U.S. that, um, focus on that. Um, this would be the first of three projects that they ultimately plan in our region, um, that have a component serving, um, the adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So one other advantage of this project is its location. Um, for the residents, it's very proximate to a lot of, um, a lot of beneficial uses. To transit, to shopping, to schools. Um, from the city's perspective, um, this is using some underutilized land. Uh, that the church owns. And so this could be an option for us to show that that's a viable strategy for future development. Um, so that the next time we do our housing element in, um, about eight years. Um, when we go through the difficult process of identifying new land. Um, we would have this as an example to show that the, it is possible to use land, um, that, that might be underutilized or to cooperate with churches. Um, and that may make some of the decisions on land easier. Um, additionally, the project has, um, as I mentioned, a full-time social services coordinator. Um, the units are very affordable. Uh, staff, um, is comfortable with the financial projections for the property. We're not going to make a ton of money on our loan repayments. Um, but we think that the project can operate successfully. I mean, it will have onsite property management to ensure, um, that it is a good neighbor. So many projects, um, many affordable projects have, um, have weaknesses similar to the ones listed here. Um, in this case, the developer has projected operating expenses to rise faster than the rents, um, which could, uh, could eventually create a challenge. Um, in covering the costs of operating the property. Um, the replacement reserves, uh, are not adequate to maintain the project over fifty-five years. Which means that the project would need to be recapitalized eventually in order to make major improvements. Um, typically that happens between fifteen and twenty years. Um, and that's, that's pretty common. Um, and as I mentioned, we, we don't expect much in the way of loan repayments on an annual basis on this. And the loan certainly is not amortizing. But these weaknesses are pretty common for these sorts of projects. Um, if these, uh, if these were, were, um, something that was, uh, that, that didn't have these types of weaknesses, I think that they'd see more private investment. Um, but affordable housing generally requires, um, some sort of government subsidy in order to make it work. Um, we do see a really strong housing market right now, and so it's likely that the developer will outperform their, um, expectations, which included, you know, vacancy rate of five percent or higher. Um, which right now we are seeing our affordable housing projects have a zero percent vacancy rate. Um, our goal is always to provide gap financing. Um, and that's what we would be doing here by providing just seven percent of the overall cost. Um, and in return, we get units that are affordable for fifty-five years and that, um, are, uh, some of them are allocated to serving special populations that are not currently served within the city. So what you have in your, um, in your staff report as an attachment to the resolution is the loan term sheet that we negotiated with the developer. It summarizes key aspects of the loan, um, and ultimately is used in preparing the loan documents if the developer is successful in getting the other funding sources that they need in order to build the project. Um, so it allows everyone to go into this transaction knowing the basics of what to expect. Um, and staff worked with the developer and the Affordable Housing Committee to agree on loan terms, um, and all parties, um, are happy with the term sheet that you have in front of you. So some key loan terms, um, we have a loan amount of a little more than three point four million dollars. At four percent interest. Um, the loan has a fifty-five-year term, um, and an annual payment of fifty percent of residual cash flow. So what is left over after the developer pays the operating expenses on the property, after they pay their mortgage payment and some of their other hard loan financing. Um, and that fifty percent of residual cash flow is split between the soft lenders proportionately. So Elk Grove would be considered one of the soft lenders. Um, so we would likely see some payments, um, but they would not be large payments. Um, and then it includes, um, disbursements that are tied to different, um, milestones, including the close of construction financing, um, completing construction, um, and some project stabilization factors. And, uh, we have in the loan terms as well, um, the commitment that the developers made to continue to provide high-quality onsite social services with a full-time resident services coordinator. Um, and to, uh, evaluate residents' incomes, um, annually and adjust the unit affordability if necessary. Um, a requirement to publicly bid trades and sub-trades, um, and some guarantees related to project completion, replacement reserves and, um, bad acts or, or, um, things that the developer may do wrong, um, not, not commonly, not commonly done. We've never had to, had to call on that before, but, um, we do put that in there. And then we require a capital needs assessment upon transfer of the property. Just to make sure that if the property is transferred, that it will be maintained, um, at the quality level that we would expect. So on November seventeenth, the Affordable Housing Committee met and they looked at the loan and the proposed terms and recommended that the council approve the conditional loan commitment, um, consistent with the loan term sheet you have tonight. Um, and so the council's options tonight would be to approve that conditional loan commitment, um, which will allow the developer to go forward and up, to apply for, um, other financing sources in early twenty-twenty-two. I believe the first one, um, that they have due is the Department of Developmental Services. Um, the council could also request continued negotiations and ask staff to bring the loan commitment forward at a later date. Um, or the council could deny the loan. Um, that concludes my presentation. I do know that we have a couple of representatives here from the developer. Um, tonight, uh, Margaret Miller, um, Julie Mendel and Christine, uh, Giornalista. Um, it looks like are, are with us. Um, and so, um, I'm happy to answer any questions and I'm sure they would be as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Montreger. Um, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. And I see a hand raised. Couple of hand raised.
And I think for the folks to do want to have a public comment on item nine point four, I think for a lot of, um, the hands being raised, some of those are from the, the applicant team. Uh, but we'll get to those in just a little bit. Uh, but other folks can also, uh, use that raised hand feature to speak on item nine point four. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, there were two written comments that were received prior to the council meeting that were circulated to the full council and staff. And I'll be pulling up that speaker timer, um, but I, I do believe some of these folks are part of the, the team, uh, setting up the item, but I'll pull up the speaker timer.
Peter Mendoza, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Peter Mendoza. And I'm the Community Program Specialist for the Sacramento Regional Office of the State Council on Developmental Disabilities. I am also a person with a disability and live in Elk Grove. I come here to really express the need of these type of housing product. Um, housing development for our community, uh, people with, people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Some facts that I think are important to consider is in California, statistics show that sixty-two percent of adults living with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities live at home with a parent or guardian. Why many of these are valued community members can live in the community as this type of housing was available. Additionally, um, people with, uh, developmental disabilities, many receive support from a social security program known as Submental Security Income. And the benefit they receive as an adult is about nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. That's about, uh, eighteen percent of the area median income. It's important to know that right here in Elk Grove, approximately eight hundred and forty-two people with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities are served by outside California regional centers, which is one of the twenty-one regional centers in California that helps with services and supports for people with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities. I also want to point out that this project also, uh, ad- so addresses the homeless issue. And, you know, people that are unhoused. And I wanted to bring you a statistic provided by the, uh, by East Pacific Society. It's estimated that forty-two point eight of the people living in shelters who are currently unhoused are people with disabilities. This project is truly needed by our com- communities and the State Council on Developmental Disabilities Secretary of Regional Office is willing to provide support and technical assistance. And, uh, uh, thanks for allowing me to, um, speak in front of you tonight. We look forward to the ribbon cutting ceremony and this project moving forward.
Thank you so much for calling in. Really, really appreciate your comments. Next caller?
Julie Mendel, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Julie Mendel with the John Stewart Company. As Sarah said, we are partnering with Ablelight on the Cornerstone Elk Grove Project. I just wanted to express our immense excitement and gratitude for the council's consideration of this conditional funding commitment. As many of you are probably well aware, while the state does continue to expand avenues of funding for affordable housing, the competition for resources remains very intense. So every dollar of the city's funding absolutely counts, particularly in a project with income targets as low as ours. Um, this will also be the first firm funding commitment the project has received and it will generate, and in fact, has already begun to generate, a lot of momentum. We need to really get things underway. So in the coming months, we'll be working on submitting our entitlement application to the Planning Department and funding applications to a variety of these other sources that Sarah mentioned in her presentation. Um, so we look forward to sharing updates with Sarah, the Affordable Housing Committee and the council as appropriate. Um, as you've heard, both the JSO and Ablelight team is available tonight to answer any questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to any other commenters. Thanks again.
Thank you so much for calling in. Um, next caller?
Christine Gornalista, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Christine Gornalista with Ablelight Cornerstone Village. And, um, as was mentioned, we're the co-developer with the John Stewart Company. And our mission is to create inclusive housing for people with, um, intellectual or developmental disabilities. And we're fortunate enough to have been invited to, to the city of Elk Grove by Light of the Valley Church, um, who is our, um, our partner, um, as well on this project. Um, they identified underutilized land and thought that it would be a great opportunity for us to work together to create a residential community, um, adjacent to their church and to build on their, their ministry. Um, our goal is to create a place that fosters a sense of community, not only among the residents, but with the Light of the Valley congregation and the, and the, um, surrounding neighborhood. Uh, we're partnering with, uh, Elk Grove Heart to identify residents who have experienced homelessness that are currently residents of Elk Grove. And also, um, as Peter Mendoza mentioned, we'll be working with the Alter Regional Center to, um, identify, um, people, um, for the set aside units for people with disabilities. Uh, the city's investment is, is critical to keeping the rents low for these vulnerable households. And we're really just a very appreciative so far for the city staff's support on this project. Um, and really looking forward to moving this forward. Um, happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in. Do we have any more speakers?
Jay Reed, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for your consideration. My name is Jay Reed. I'm pastor of Light of the Valley. And when, um, Ablelight came to us, they were Bethesda then, about this- And when Ablelight came to us, Bethesda, then about this project, you know, this is kind of the sweet spot of what we like to do is a church is open doors and be a community for people that don't have one, especially when we think about disabled folks with disabilities wanting to to live independently. And we'd love to be a community to help support that. The other thing I really appreciate about this is, to me, the city of Elk Grove, the leaders have always been kind of forward thinking people and say, hey, let's do things nobody else is doing for this benefit. And so I think Sarah mentioned the idea that there are other churches in our kind of situation. And this is really a sweet spot. We already have a community. Let's bring the housing. And now it's not just a, you know, affordable housing unit, it becomes a a community. And so that's our interest in it as being a model for both other churches, but maybe other communities too, to say, hey, what if we teamed up, right, and bring the resources of people to the need of a living space, put them together? And and you've got you've got a really strong community. So that's, you know, that's attractiveness to us. And I love the fact that you guys think forward like that and love to be a partner in all this. So thanks for your time.
Thank you so much for calling in. Any more callers?
And I am looking over the list of attendees. I do not see any further raised hand functions being utilized. So that will conclude the public comment opportunity for item nine point four.
All right, then I will go and close the public comment opportunity and open it up for council comments, questions, direction. We can start with, I'll start with Councilwoman Nguyen. I have to get used to that.
I think you'll get it by the next meeting, but no, I really appreciate this presentation. One of the things that stood out for me was the fact that they have experience in services with the intellectual disability, adults with intellectual disability. I mean, that's something that we don't see too often, too many places that have that experience and have that resource that is available. And so that really intrigued me a lot in hearing that. So I want to thank you for the interest in here and just bringing this to Elk Grove, and I fully support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, obviously, serving on the Affordable Housing Committee with the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Soon. You know, we've heard about this project coming forward for a while now, but I just, I can't speak effusively enough to say that there's just so much right about this project, its location, the upcycling of the the land, the synergy created with the partnership with the church, the demographics that they seek to serve and how deep of a dive that they make to to really break the cycle of poverty. It's, it's, I mean, my only regret is that we didn't have more money in our affordable housing fund to to fund this project at an even deeper level. So excited for it to move forward, excited to welcome now Abel and John Stewart Companies to town and excited to see Light of the Valley really step up their ministry and and create, as Pastor Jay said, you know, a better community on this site. So enthusiastically in support.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I couldn't agree more with Councilmember Hume, all his points he just mentioned. I'll just add that, you know, if you look around at our community, how popular our Project Ride program is, there are attendance at the Jesse Baker School, you know, having a project like this that that will serve that community as as those generations grow, grow up and would like a place of their own. It's going to be a great asset to our community. So happy to move this forward as well. Thank you.
I think you are the first motion, so.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion in a second, and I echo all the comments you've already heard. The inclusive housing is amazing and serving our special needs community with independent living opportunities. It's the right thing to do at the end of the day. And like Councilmember Hume mentioned, I too wish we could do a deeper dive in this and help even more. But at least we're heading in the right direction. The location is great. There are services around and what I really appreciate is it will be integrated into existing neighborhoods and a great use of the space from the church site. So thank you for those partnerships and opportunities for serving our greater community. We're all in this together. So thank you for for other stakeholders for stepping up. So I did hear a motion in a second.
And with that, I will commence with the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of item nine point four will pass four oh.
All right, next item.
I'll take us to item nine point five, which is receive the twenty twenty one local appointments list, authorize recruitment for all seats on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and consider the appointment of one voting member to the Trails Committee. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. This item has three parts to it. The first part is an annual process that we go through with the Matty Act, which is just to review the local appointments list. What it really does is it kind of puts out the the notice to the public of those opportunities to serve. And in the event that there's any vacancies that are unexpected, what it does is it triggers the events for us to notice that vacancy and have the opportunity for our members of the public to apply for seats on our local boards and commissions. The second part of this, under the approval on your consent agenda tonight, was some changes to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission as well as that new format on the the application. And so I'll be proceeding to open up and receive applications for the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. The target for the appointment consideration would be on our first meeting of January twelfth, twenty twenty two. And the last part of this is actually directly in relation to the Matty Act. We had a vacancy, we just recently had an appointment to the Trails Committee from a vacancy that had occurred back in October, was when the appointment happened. But within less than one month, we had a vacant, another vacancy open up on the Trails Committee. Per the Matty Act, we opened it up, and though we already had a pool of five applicants, that's why we've kind of fast forwarded for that one vacancy to fill the seat with the five applicants that we had before from before. Once we did the advertisement, we doubled that number. There is a staff memo that went out about this. So in our staff report, it says there's ten applications. You actually have eleven. So it's another individual that we could say sorry to this evening, but we will give them opportunities as time rolls forward. But you'll have the application packet of the eleven applicants for the Trails Committee. If you have any further questions, I'm available, but otherwise we can shift over to taking public comment on the item.
All right, very good. Then I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
And at this time for our attendees in the Zoom environment, now would be the opportunity on number nine point five to use that raised hand function. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, as I mentioned, there was the staff memo that went out, but there was also a submitted email that came earlier this evening, and that was requested. It is from one of the applicants who was not able to attend the meeting this evening, but they did have a brief statement and they requested that be read into the record at the discretion of the City Council. But with that, I will move towards our list of folks on our attendee list and I will pull up that speaker timer.
And Mr. Lindgren, will you please read the comment at the conclusion of the speakers?
Indeed, I will do so.
Shonda Moore, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the council. My name is Shonda Moore, and it is with delight that I get a second chance to be considered to fill the vacancy on the Elk Grove Trails Committee. I am a proud homeowner in Elk Grove and I actively ride the bike paths with my one year old son and husband. As a consumer of the bike trails, I noticed an opportunity for improving access to the paths to connect in a more central location for everyone to enjoy. I'm more comfortable riding on trails and sidewalks with my son in tow rather than the designated street paths. I can only imagine that other families feel the same. So trails connecting in desirable locations for people to easily access is a win for our city. Additionally, I am an employee of a network of public schools that opened a million, multimillion dollar facility in the new residential area developed beyond Billbley. The students who attend our schools, particularly the high schoolers, have dual enrollment at Consumerist River College, and I envision Elk Grove as a bike friendly city similar to Davis with a student family centric approach to lowering lowering our emissions as we prepare for the state's long term vision to repurpose solar energy as an effort to save our planet. I am a Director of Marketing and Communications for Fortune School of Education and a community servant. I serve in the community on the Healthy Lifestyles Committee with my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, as well as on two book clubs. One local chapter, Go On Girl Book Club, which is a part of a national organization, and the other is a Facebook community called This Brown Girl Reads. I did have the pleasure to sit on the City of Sacramento Innovation and Creative Economy Task Force in two thousand seventeen, and I love contributing to my community and using my skills and assets to make the place a better place for all of us to reside. I know that I can add value to the committee from the vantage point of residents with growing families as well as the school facility with students. Thank you, and I am giving back forty four seconds of time.
Thank you so much for calling in and your interest. Next caller, please.
Pam Meter, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Pam Meter, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be selected for the Trails Committee. I have been visiting Elk Grove since nineteen eighty nine. My sister moved here from Southern California and purchased a home over here off of Frankland when there was mostly cows and stink. And so another sister moved here to go to Cal State Sacramento. And with those two moving up here, I began to visit once or twice a year, and I watched this community grow and change. I remember when Elk Grove became a city. I remember when the schools was voted one of the top school districts in the country. And this continued, the growth and change in diversity continued to impress me in so much as three years ago, I had to make a decision where to move to retire. And of course, I came to Elk Grove. I've been here for three years and as a resident instead of a visitor, I love the way the city is managed. I love the diversity. I love the community. And listening to the proposals tonight for projects and knowing the direction that Elk Grove is going makes me even more excited to want to give my skill set, to use my skill set to better continue the improvements that are have been proposed here tonight. I am a program manager certified. I work for Farmers Insurance. And I really do have a lot to offer the community and the city of Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you so much and for your interest. We'll go on to our next caller.
Chris Newman, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Chris Newman, and I thought I'd tell you a little bit about myself. I've lived here in Elk Grove for twenty eight years. Seven of those were in the Central Laguna area near Donner Elementary. The last twenty one have been here in the Lakeside Community. I'm a Sac State graduate also. For the last ten years, I've worked for the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation in a rehabilitation program. And this is the third time that I've applied for a position as a part of the Trails Committee. Some of my qualifications include, I've been a volunteer in the community for many years. When my kids were younger, I was a youth soccer coach for ten years. I also coached my kids when they were in elementary school at Stone Lake in volleyball for four years. When the Elk Grove stops on the Amgen Tour of California, we're here, I acted as a race marshal. And I volunteered at also local running races through the years in addition to helping out at some local churches. Currently, I'm the girls' university volleyball coach at Consumerist Oaks High School, and I have been for the last thirteen years. In addition, I'm an avid user of the existing trail system. Between walking, running and biking, I've been on a hundred percent of the trails west of Highway ninety nine and almost all of the trails on the east side of ninety nine. In fact, I was on one of the trails out behind the Stone Lake Development today. And when I'm not teleworking, I do work in Folsom, and I've had the opportunity to utilize their their trail system and see how, you know, things work there and see what advantages they have. And hopefully been able, will be able to pass those along in service on this committee. In addition, I'm a regular user of the American River Bike Trail also. Recently, I have worked with the City of Elk Grove Public Works Department and also the CSD on some trail maintenance issues. And hopefully those are going to be resolved in the next few months. In addition, I've attended and provided input at previous Trails Committee meetings. And lastly, I'm just passionate about this committee and how it can affect and utilize the the options that we have here in Elk Grove. And I think that there's some opportunities for improvement within the trail system. And hopefully I can participate in working through those and providing suggestions. And I thank you for this opportunity to serve the city of Elk Grove. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for calling in and your interest. Are there any other callers?
And I'm not seeing the raised hand function used, being utilized for many of our other attendees in the Zoom environment, but I do have that statement from one of the applicants that I will read now.
Thank you.
And this is a message from Mr. Brett Bartholomew. Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for considering my application for the Trails Committee as for a Trails Committee member. I'm ready to serve, and I'm very interested in furthering the great work of the city and implementing the Bike Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan. My nearly thirty five years of knowledge of Elk Grove's layout can be put to good use. Thank you, Brett Bartholomew.
All right, thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. And I want to thank every applicant that expressed their interest. It's always great to get a number of applications from our residents that showcase their passion and desire to serve our great city. And it's it's a tough decision. We have so many passionate, passionate individuals that want to serve on the committees, and we only have space for one. And so the person I would like to nominate is someone who has demonstrated tenacity by applying three times. And that is Mr. Christopher Newman, who lives in District One, where we currently do not have representation. But I think most importantly, as you heard from his statement, he's an avid user of our trail system. And I actually had the opportunity to meet with him shortly after the last go around, where, you know, he definitely expressed his interest in still wanting to be part of the community, but most importantly, still the Trails Committee. And his desire to lend his voice has already been demonstrated, that he already actively participates with the committee and has provided his knowledge and expertise, which is great. So my recommendation to fill this vacancy, and I applaud again your tenacity to apply and let that maybe be a sign to others that if you didn't get selected this go around, there, you know, please check back with the city website. There will be other committees and commissions that become available. But for tonight, for our vacancy, I would like to nominate Christopher Newman to fill this vacancy.
Well, I just want to chime in real quick here and just say a few words. First, you know, I appreciate, as you said, those that applied, but Mr. Brett Bartholomew, I've worked and participated in the anti-trash pickup, and and he was there. He brought his family out there as well, too. I know it's your first time, Mr. Bartholomew, and I I hope that you'll consider applying again. But I do appreciate you spending those Saturday mornings out there in the cold mornings and helping us pick up trash and keeping our city and our neighborhoods clean. And then to Ms. Sandra Moore, I I hear you. I mean, I've got two little girls, and I myself have gone on the bike trails and even in the streets, and they're not safe on the streets. And so we would rather, much rather, use the trails. And, you know, when you were talking, I understood everything you said, and I imagine exactly what I have to go through as well with my children. And so I appreciate you calling in. And to Ms. Pam Meter, just, you know, the fact that you've been coming to Elk Grove for decades now and finally deciding this is Deciding this is is home for you, I think really has all of us, you know. Understanding that and knowing that this is home for all of us as well, too. And glad to see that you are wanting to serve in a capacity of this. But Mr. Chris Newman, this is his third time applying. And he does have the experience and he sounds like he is on the trail. I'm sure if you're running the trails, you probably see Vice Mayor Darren Soon. All the time because I see him on my way to work running with his AirPods in. And so I appreciate you applying and keeping at it, you know, third time's a charm. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and let Vice Mayor Soon or Councilmember Hume chime in.
Yes, Vice Mayor Soon, you have the floor since your cameras on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember. I'll say Vice Mayor Winn, too.
It'll take us some time.
I look, I also just want to recognize and appreciate everybody applying this evening. You can hear the the passion and dedication in everybody's voices. And, you know, Councilmember Winn, you did a great job highlighting everybody individually. I won't do as good a job as you, but I. I'm gonna try because it really did touch my heart, Pam Meter, you know, your your passion for the community. And as a fellow PMP, I recognize your work that you went in to get that and achieve that. And so I think you'd be a great asset as well as Shonda Moore and we're all familiar with with Margaret Fortune and her school there. And the work you're doing for them. So appreciate that. And Brett Bartholomew, I mean, you know, everybody knows how much you've been in the community. I know you're not here tonight personally, but if you ever watch, if you watch this. We do know and appreciate the dedication you have to this community with the trash cleanups. And so it is difficult. Chris Newman obviously applied for a third time. And, you know, I also hear the passion in his voice. I think he would do great as as would all of you. But I would also support the mayor in this in this choice because again, we don't also don't have a District One representative. I know a lot of you also serve in District One, but I think all of these things taken together. I think Mr. Newman would be the best choice at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just have a quick question. I noticed that for the applicants, it listed which district they come from. But on the the actual members of the body, I couldn't find the districts there. And so did I miss something? Was there a way to to see?
Yeah, I can read to you. It was in one of our packets.
Maybe if you looked. Oh, is it in the hard copy?
Yeah.
In the, yeah.
Yeah, Jason's email.
We have two from District Two and two in District Three.
Gotcha. Okay, it wasn't in the staff report available online. Anyway. That's neither here nor there. I support the the choice. I mean, you could hear Mr. Newman's passion in his voice. I am going to add Shonda Moore to the my ever growing list of Elk Grove residents that just impressed the heck out of me the first time I hear them speak. And and hope that that she will stay engaged. Obviously, she has a vested passion for this, given. Her her usage of the trails, but there's lots of ways that she could serve and I'd like to see that happen. And I'd like to welcome Pam. Who finally made the leap and and left a stinky old Southern California and came up here to Elk Grove. Well, you know, once the stink came off of Elk Grove, apparently. And 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 I think I think it's just amazing to hear those comments. From folks who are new to town to really the appreciation of stuff that we've been fighting for here in Elk Grove for a long time. And so a great group of applicants. Brett Bartholomew is a rock star. I've been out there on the trash cleanup with him as well. And I hope that we can find a place for him to serve and I I would like to follow up with that on Council comments a little bit later in the meeting.
Very good.
Thank you. Good choice, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Soon, I see your hand raised. Do you have something to add or?
Mayor, yeah, I feel indulged. I apologize. I just thank Councilmember Hume because he reminded me. Because I I don't want to wait till Council comments because I don't know if all these folks will still be on. As part of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, we, the Transportation Committee, which I'm currently chair of, we just. Released the draft document of the master, regional master trails plan. And if those of you haven't on this participants, applicants haven't heard of this. It is a regional trail network connecting the six county region of which our Laguna Trail System is part of. And so I, all of you are so passionate about the trails. I hope you'll stay engaged in that effort. Because that's truly something that we're gonna, will be unique to our region. And it'll be an opportunity for you to continue to be involved in something even greater than just our city. So just want to put that out there. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on then to our next item.
And that next item.
Motion, I think you saw the direction, so.
Yeah, I think we had agreement with the moment that you put forward, Mayor.
Very good. All right, our next item is Council Comments Reports Feature Agenda Items. I will start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep my report fairly brief, given that it's such a busy season, but I just gotta say that. For the events that I've been going out to recently, it's it's so heartwarming and encouraging and just feels so good. To be back out at things like the Gobble Wobble, the Dickens Fair and the Parade of Lights and just to see people out again. You know, it makes the holiday season that much more special. So that's all I will say as far as that with respect to regional boards. Had our team meeting, had a couple of board member interviews for Paratransit, had a regional. Rail Working Group meeting for the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, had a sanitation district board meeting this morning. And then there's a connector Joint Powers Authority meeting on Friday, and I believe that will probably be the last meeting of the year for any of my reasonable boards. And then with respect to future agenda items, one I'd like to bring up, something related to the last item that. That Sharon Anderson mentioned at the front end of the meeting and I I'd like to explore, I'm not promising that we'll follow through on it for sure. But I'd like to explore establishing a beautification committee. I've had a little bit of exposure to the one down in Galt. Their primary task is is more centered around graffiti abatement and that type of a thing. But I, you know, the more eyes we have out looking after things, the better. So I'd like to see if we have council consensus to to do that, to move forward and looking at that.
I certainly would be supportive of exploring that as an option.
Same.
Yep. Great. And then my last item is a total non sequitur. It has nothing to do with anything and it's really kind of a strange. Thing to bring up out of the blue, but I was down at a meeting in the Delta. And it was brought up to me that Sacramento County and the City of Sacramento. Both have gone on record opposing the tunnel plan, which is now called the Delta Conveyance Project. And so I would like to ask whether or not there would be willingness and consensus from my colleagues to move forward. Getting something on record to stand in solidarity with our neighbors to the west in the Delta.
Absolutely.
I'm Vice Mayor Soon, did you say something?
I didn't say something yet, but I I may need to abstain from that, given my employment. So I just gonna, I need to investigate that a little bit. Sentimentally, I'm with you.
Gotcha. Good point.
Councilmember Hume, is this, you already have like the verbiage that you want the city to support? Or is this, is there some, is there a letter out there? What are we actually supporting or opposing?
So no is the short answer and no is the long answer. I would be, if we would like to have an information item brought back on kind of the status of things and go from there. I mean, I'm willing to to be flexible in as far as next steps are concerned. It was just asked that, hey, how come Elk Grove isn't on record as one way or another? And I know I personally am against. The the project myself, you know, they're they're talking about storing the spoils from these tunnels on 260 acres of land just down at Twin Cities and Franklin. So right, you know, in our tourism report, they mentioned the Consumas River Preserve is one of the the highlights for our region. And this would be right outside its front door. So there's just a lot of things that I don't like about it. And so assuming that. Yeah, I had concurrence just to bring something forward, but.
Yeah, to bring it forward, four considerations to sign, right? Not because right now I wouldn't know what I would be signing. So I would.
Correct.
And I believe Kara Reddick, she does a lot, there you are, Ms. Reddick. For legislative items or policy issues, can you share that with us?
Yeah, I can reach out to the, to a staff contact at the County of Sacramento tomorrow and find out exactly what they opposed. And we can prepare something back for a council consideration.
Okay, very good. Yeah, because you you do that so well with all of the other policy and legislative items. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, yep. All right, Councilwoman Winn, I, that's gotta be a hard one.
Thank you. Just very brief, I was also gonna mention Ms. Sharon Anderson and the Beautification Committee. But I just want to thank her because that anti-trash committee group club. Are there every Saturday rain or shine, even when it was 100 degree weather out there. I've been able to be there only twice and I brought them donuts and I feel like I should bring them so much more because. They come out there and spend hours in the morning, if they're Saturday morning, just to keep our city clean. And just the commitment that we have from our community members. Who want to come out and spend their Saturday morning, just a few hours in the morning to do that makes you just so proud of our community. And she took the lead on this and she's there every single morning as well, too. And I've heard that she's rearranged her schedule when she has had vacation in place or whatnot, just because she didn't want to miss this Saturday. And I want to thank you for her efforts and and the other members that are out there, Liz Irons out there just every Saturday helping out. So I certainly am supportive of this beautification committee commission, whatever we want to call it. I would really like to see it turn into something that we can support as well, too. So that's it. Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and appreciate those comments from Councilmember Hume and Councilmember Winn on the Beautification Committee or Commission, whatever you want to do. I I wanted to also thank Jody and Kristen and everybody involved in putting together just a fantastic. You know, illumination and holiday parade. I think we all had a great time out there. I agree with Councilmember Hume. It was great to see everybody out there with the weather was perfect. It was cold, but it's still perfect for for Christmas and it was a lot of fun lighting the tree with all of you. So just put everybody, I think, in in great spirits. It's just what we need after all this, these last couple of years. So for committee assignments, we we had a Secog Transportation Committee last week that. I'm excited that we're moving from the Regional Transportation Improvement Program. A lot of Elk Grove projects, including recommending 13 million for Camera Road, which is fantastic news. And several other projects, you know, grow the North Laguna Creek area, Big Horn Boulevard and Franklin Boulevard improvements. Excuse me, citywide traffic signal enhancement and congestion's relief, another 1.8 million there. So we've got a lot of this round is a good portion when over the. The whole six county region is coming to Elk Grove and these projects and so. Excited to, it's not a quite done deal yet, but definitely it's a step in the right direction. And just thought all of you might be interested in hearing some of these projects are important to us are getting some funding. So thanks.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. The regional stand today, there's three meetings tomorrow. I've got GSEC Board in the morning. I've got STA. And Library Authority, so lots going on in that front. Participated with pretty much all of you on a lot of our community events. It's been great to see and connect with our residents. With all of our various events and looking forward to more coming up and over the next several days and weeks ahead. I do want to highlight our Franklin High School that all of us that are here tonight. Came out and supported our students, which is so great. And, you know, we weren't the best singers or dancers. But we were there to support the kids and have a good time and most importantly, to raise money for a great school. And they were showing creative ways to do fundraising, given the COVID restrictions. With with an online Zoom interaction with the with the parent communities and other community groups and raising money. So it it just, it warmed my heart that we were all able to be there for our students. And share in some of their great work and they are just so incredibly talented, just really, really proud of them. And then our overnight warming locations. Like if I can get Jason back on the line, if you can just share some of those dates. It's really important to know that we have those centers now open to keep our unhomed population warm. Mr. Beerman, I don't know if you're still here with us. If not, just go on the, oh, okay. Yep, they're open. And we have our, I believe this week we have our first first one, right?
Yes, opening on Thursday. And then I think through Tuesday is the plan right now at the United Methodist Church in Old Town.
All right, very good. But this is just also great partnerships and collaboration with others to help our unhomed community. And do that important work. So with that, I don't have anything else that I needed to say. Happy holidays, everyone. If we don't see you again in other community events, be safe. And blessings to everyone for a prosperous and healthy new year. Thank you.
Happy holidays and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
All right, we're adjourning at 9:51.